Good evening, everybody. Excuse us for being a few minutes late this evening. We had several items that we needed to discuss in closed session. We had that work behind us, so now I'd like to go ahead and call the regular meeting of November 12th to order for the Placerville City Council. I'd ask you to all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, and that I would ask you to remain standing for a moment of silence in recognition of fallen Eldorado County Sheriff's Deputy Brian Ishmael.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Please be seated. I'd like to first recognize the members of the Ishmael family that are here this evening, members of the Eldorado County Sheriff's Department, including Sheriff DiAgostini in the audience, the undersheriff, also additional members of the Placerville Police Department, along with our chief, who is always in residence with us on our Tuesday evening meetings. We welcome you this evening. We will move forward with the roll call. Can I ask the clerk to please call a roll?
Mayor Acuna.
Here.
Councilmember Burley.
Here.
Vice Mayor Saragosa.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Here.
Councilmember Thomas.
Here.
Thank you very much. I think I'm going to go ahead and skip forward a little bit. I'll ask Mr. Driscoll to quickly report on the closed-session items.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, in closed session tonight, the council, with all members present unanimously rejected the claim of Ernesto Perez, and also with all members present unanimously rejected the claim of Stephen Linson. Other than that, no other action which reportable was taken.
Thank you, Mr. Driscoll. Always a pleasure to have your expertise at the end of our dais. Moving on to adoption of the agenda, is there a motion for adoption this evening?
Move for adoption.
Second.
Moved in second, and all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. This brings us on to ceremonial matters, which is reason why a number of our guests are here this evening. It is our honor this evening to read and adopt the proclamation, again honoring fallen Eldorado County Sheriff's Deputy Brian Ishmael, whose end of watch was 10/23/19. "A proclamation of the City Council of the City of Placerville honoring the service of fallen Eldorado County Sheriff's Deputy Brian Ish Ishmael, whereas the City of Placerville honors the service and life of Eldorado County Sheriff's Deputy Brian Ish Ishmael, and whereas on October 23rd, 2019, Deputy Ishmael was fatally injured responding to a 911 call for help, and whereas Deputy Ishmael was a dedicated public servant that had distinguished himself by his friendship, integrity, and honor, and whereas Deputy Ishmael was born at Marshall Hospital in Placerville, graduated from Ponrosa High, and leaving Eldorado County only long enough to attend Universal Technical Institute in Texas, and whereas Deputy Ishmael started his calling to protect and serve with the Placerville Police Department in March of 2013, quickly becoming an agency favorite, holding the positions of field training officer, school resource officer, and armorer, and whereas in October 2015, Deputy Ishmael found his final law enforcement family with the Eldorado County Sheriff's Office, where he excelled and became a favorite of his partners and all that met him, and whereas Deputy Ishmael is survived by his wife Katie, children Prudence, Zoe, and Cash, parents Kim and Dawn, and sister Brenda. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Placerville does hereby pay its highest tribute in respects to the service of Eldorado County Sheriff's Deputy Brian Ish Ishmael dated November 12th, 2019, signed by myself and every member of this City Council." It would be my honor to present this to the sheriff and the family, if that would be appropriate.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Acuna, council, all of you folks, especially Chief Ortega, when times, when things like this happen, these types of ceremonies, although we all know that they're pretty compulsory, but I can tell you from the outpouring of support, the way that everybody has come together, this community has come together, both our agencies have really solidified and dealt with everything we're going through, watching the family, one of the strongest families I've ever seen. To me, this is not so much as compulsory as it is the true honor that you are all bestowing on Ish. We really appreciate it. We thank you for it, and pray to God that we never have to go through this again. So, thank you all very, very much on behalf of the Eldorado County Sheriff's Office and the family. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff DiAgostini. On behalf of the City Council, I would just like to thank his family for his service to the Placerville Police Department. He was a highly regarded and well-loved officer. We hated to lose him, but it was obvious that he found his love and great comradeship at the Eldorado County Sheriff's Department. The memorial last week was one of the most moving and honorable things I have ever been a part of, and as the opportunity for this community to serve as the backdrop for the completion of the motorcade during the end of the memorial, I think it goes to show that the entire community showed just how much they loved and respected him and all of our law enforcement and first responders, and it was an honor to, and is an honor to be a part of a community that displayed that to the entire world. And as the sheriff said, we hoped it never would happen, and we hope it never happens again, but the display of strength, compassion, and support that this entire city and county gave to you and your family for your loss, it was certainly our honor to try and do our part. So, thank you very much. Is there anyone else? Chief, would you like to say a few words? Thank you very much. And is there any council members that would like to add any other comments?
The only thing I would like to add is that I would like to, again, acknowledge the vigil that we had in downtown Placerville, and it was so, I tell you, it just touched my heartstrings, and I just, the outpouring of people, it was just, and to have it at the bell tower, and just such a part of Placerville, and it was just like, okay, this was home. This is where he belonged, and it was just such a pleasure to be, well, to me, I got to speak, but it was just an honor, and the ringing of that bell, I don't know whose idea that was, but that was just, oh, gosh, the tears really came down when that happened, because it's such a part of Placerville, but I just want to thank you so much. It was just, it was beautiful, whoever, everybody that participated, but it was wonderful. Thank you.
The folks at home won't know, but the resolution that we just presented to the family actually has the bell tower in the background, which isn't what we normally do, but it was very obvious that it was very, very important for Ish, and so it was our honor to make sure that that was a part of the resolution. With that, we thank you very much for coming this evening. Any member of the family would like to comment? If not, that's totally, Dennis, I think, wants to comment.
Go ahead, Mr. Thomas.
I don't want to take away from the significance of our appreciation for Brian for serving our community and how he has, well, how this has all gone. I want to also look at what's the next step, and what do we do and how can we best honor him moving forward? And I know that the sheriff has gone through great lengths to inspire our legislators to consider how they approach these issues that have created this situation that didn't need to happen, and I, for one, want to see, I would like to see the city participate and support the sheriff's department and the county in every effort that they have to communicate to our legislators on how to listen to our law enforcement, seek their advice, and look for solutions that involve more than just a political solution. And I think that's the highest and greatest honor we could give to him moving forward, that this doesn't happen again. And from this point, I don't know where we go as a city. I would like to find out how we can, in a meaningful way, support the efforts of Sheriff DiAgostini and those that he is working with to move this forward. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. And again, I had the opportunity yesterday to, at the Veterans Day Memorial Service, to give the sheriff a hug, much deserved, and thank him for his advocacy, been very strong, been very vocal, very clear that this was unacceptable, it will always be unacceptable, and it should never be forgotten. And Dennis, as you've just said, we can continue to work with his department to make sure that that message continues to be delivered as clearly as he is delivering it right now to a large audience of folks that need to pay attention, that this cannot go in vain. So, Sheriff, we look forward to continuing that support. Any letters or anything we can do to help you, please let us know. I think with that, we probably, I would like to recognize the family, if you'd take a moment to, we'll let you get out before we get on with our other tedious business of City Council, but thank you very much for coming this evening. All right. Thank you very much for your participation in that. All right. I will go back and see if there's any brief comments from City Council members. Item 3.1. No? Okay.
Just what we've attended, which we usually, but I do think they were important. I did attend the Save the Graves. It was a living history of the cemetery, with cemetery tours. Job well done to the folks who put that on. I hope they're going to do it again. I think it really drew a lot of interest in the cemetery up there that really needs help, and I, they deserve all the support we can give them to help keep that old place going, and it was so, it was just really clever, the way they put it on and paid homage to some of the older families around that have been in Placerville's history, and I thought I really had heard all the stories, but I hadn't. I did learn some background about some of the families and how they got here and all the things that they did, so I really commend all the folks that that took a lot of time and effort, and I appreciated it.
Yeah, I hope they do it again. Unfortunately, I was out of town, and I was just absolutely bummed to miss that.
Yeah.
So, if there's a second one, count me in.
Yeah, well, I hope, they did, they charged a small fee, but it was worth it. I mean, it's, you know, contributing to helping, like I say, that old place that really needs help, and along with everyone else, I attended the ribbon cutting for the Western Placerville Drive, and that, oh, my gosh, we waited for a long time for that, and it was a very proud moment, and I've driven it, and it's great, so I hope it gets used. That's, I think that's, and then, like I say, I had the honor to speak at the vigil the other night, and that was, that was really a wonderful occasion, too, as far as paying tribute, so, thank you.
Thank you, Patty. Any other council members? Karen, did you have anything to report?
Well, as Patty mentioned, I was also at the ribbon cutting with my colleagues, so congratulations on finishing that project up, at least at stage, and we all attended the service for Deputy Ishmael, which, as you mentioned, was just a really heartwarming and impressive ceremony, and I also met with a scout troop of 10, 11-year-olds and answered their questions about local government, which was a fun.
That's fun, isn't it?
They're fun. All right. Since we last met, we managed to have the lights go on and off several times. I would like to just thank all of the city employees, start with the department heads and the chief of police even, and all of his troops, and all of the troops underneath all of his department heads, that kept this city running smoothly while PG&E had its difficulties on and off through the last two weeks of October. I don't think that we really had one incident that was related to anything that was created by weather or anything like that. We had, the city was kept safe, we were all ready. At the same time, the department heads, I really appreciate working with all of your employees who didn't have power at their houses. A lot of them also didn't have water, because they live on wells, and there was no childcare, there was no schools, there was a lot of different issues that all of our department heads and that our employees had to deal with, and I just want to commend every one of our employees for working together as teams and keeping all the city services running smoothly while a large utility wasn't able to do the same. So, I'm very proud of the effort that went on here in this town, also very proud of the hard work, I mean, hard work, that Cleve put in for about a year to convince Caltrans District 3 Signal Department that yes, those are their three signals, and yes, they should have a generator, and yes, they did, and those three generators prevented massive gridlock and massive disruption to our emergency services. That was one thing that Pierre and I learned in October of 2018. Those signals can turn this town into a death trap. Did not happen this year once, and that is because of all the hard work that Cleve put in communicating the importance of that. So, thank you to him on that. The, I just say briefly, and we have an item a little later on in the agenda regarding PG&E and our continued response. I think Cleve and myself and Pierre, Pierre subbed in for one weekend of the outages, we're learning more, we're learning more of kind of where PG&E is thinking and where they're not thinking, and very clear the impact to the city. David Warren's department has come up, rough number of a million dollars a day of economic impact to this city when the power is off. Every day, $1 million in lost sales and income disruption. That equates to around $20,000 in lost sales tax every day. Totally unacceptable. We'll get to those, those points are later on this evening, but again, thanks to staff for getting through all of that with us. Regarding the Western Placerville, that was great. I'm honored to have been, got to cut a ribbon. Not every mayor gets to cut a ribbon, so I appreciate doing that. It is beautiful. Give those trees a couple of years, and it's going to be a damn great-looking park-and-ride. The Bus District is in the process of making that conversion, so that facility will be fully functional. We are giving up the lease at Eldorado Transit for the park-and-ride facilities over by the fairgrounds, which are really in poor condition and in terror, you know, just not safe really even to be using, so this is going to be a huge plus to the Transit District and all of our commuter riders. We're going to have a first-class park-and-ride now. And lastly, I'll just throw this out for further thought, the large boulder, 40-some-hundred, 100,000-pound boulder that's out there, was suggested to me by someone close to me that that might make a fine monument to our first responders, all done through the formal process, of course, as well as recognizing that it's a trailhead, but if you think about who uses that new on-ramp and who will continue to use that on-ramp, tremendous law enforcement presence. So, if we had a formal process sometime next year to go through creating, you know, with Park and Recreation, having them do, go through the review process and look at utilizing part of that big boulder for a first responders, and of course, Brian Ishmael's name would be first one on there, but all of our law enforcement folks will be going past there. They go to the jail, they go to the county offices, future courthouse site, every person that served jury duty will go by that location. For that boulder, we won't talk about the, there was some, a little bit of work that was done to it during this past week, and that's understandable. This is not the Eldorado Hills Boulder. These are unique things, but.
And I think we need to stop it before that gets started, because we don't want that happening.
I think it would be a beautiful setting and a very high visibility, especially for our law enforcement communities, again, especially with courthouse sometime in the future, and everybody see that, so, I'll just throw that out. All right, moving on. Let's see, ceremonial matters, we did that, thank you very much. That was quite an honor. Public comment, this is a portion of the meeting where the public is invited to talk to the council. I'll ask Mr. Morris if we had any written communication this evening.
No, I don't believe so.
All right. Thank you, sir. This is out, so now, item 7.2, oral communication. This is the time, if there's a member of the public that wishes to address the council on an item that is not on this evening's agenda, this will be your three minutes. We do ask that you limit your topics to items that are pertinent to the business of the City Council. I recognize an advocate from the Clay Street neighborhood. Good evening. Could you please introduce yourself?
Yes, my name's Tammy Dan Zingram. Now, I'm not here to talk about Clay Street. My husband will do that.
Okay.
I'm bringing to the council the idea of renaming the Center Street pedestrian overcrossing in honor of Deputy Brian Ishmael. I think that would be much better, of rock, too, but I think that would be awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. And is there another member of the public wishing to address the council on a non-agendized item?
Okay, I know you recognize me.
But let the television audience know who you are.
I'm her other half. I'm Ed Ingram. I live on Clay Street.
Thank you, Ed.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Just to kind of go over the Clay Street traffic impact on the weekends again. Commander Wren, City PD, I discussed with him briefly about the radar unit that was set up there, taking a traffic count for a period between October 10th and 18th. Monday through Friday, the traffic count was 579 vehicles per day, 24-hour period. Saturday through Sunday, the traffic count was doubled to write 1,127 vehicles per 24-hour on a Saturday, Sunday, with the impact from the overflow of Highway 50. Also, Commander Wren has said he's very in support of addressing to reduce that traffic volume, whatever help you need from him that he could help you with, far as signage or speed bumps or anything like that, he's definitely in favor of doing that. Traffic calming measures, Dennis, you mentioned that, I believe, prior meeting we had before. There has been something done in the past. There was a petition put together addressed to the City Council. I don't have it with me. She's supposed to be here, but she wasn't able to show up tonight, and also with the traffic calming measures, paragraphs of how to deal with those issues and different solutions for traffic calming. Hard signage is probably one of the biggest ones, fixed on permanent sign, post, be-to-be placed at different locations, Mosquito Road, Clay Street, and Coleman. Stop signs at the Mosquito and Bike Trail, three-way stop signs in there, and possibly using the beacon lights that you have on Broadway flashing when you got crossing individuals, warning the traffic. See what I got. Rumble strips on Clay Street and Coleman in the steep areas to help control kind of the speeding issues with the excessive traffic, and possibly one-way streets, look into those different positions. I think, Mayor, you mentioned something previously, Coleman having a portion or all of it as a one-way, which would be also a traffic calming solution for waves and a new application you can get on your phone, so if it's going to show a one-way, which is the opposite direction of where they want to go, they're not, not want to go that way, correct? So, and possibly on the east end of Clay Street from Franklin down to Anderson, just a short section in there, a one-way going to the east, but the rest of the area, it's normal traffic flow in there, which would help reduce any non-local traffic from going up accessing that stretch of road. And possibly, if someone could contact us, if you've got someone that's going to work with this and try and figure out different measures to work with, work with myself or someone in residence, that we can relay to other residents, let them know what's going on or what possibly could go on. We would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ed. I know you and Tammy have been very busy with helping us do a lot of weekend work, which is difficult for us, and those numbers are very important. Thank you very much. Is there another member of the public wishing to address the council this evening under open comment? Good evening, Sue.
Good evening. Sue Rodman, Placerville resident. My first comment is, great job on the parking garage. The people are using all the spaces now, and it looks great. And my next is some comments about our Main Street closures. During the Brute Fest on Saturday at 5:00, I needed to go from Big Cut Road to Mosquito Road. Well, Pacific Street was bumper to bumper, and I managed to get across that and get to the Mosquito exit and noticed that there was traffic just pouring off the Mosquito exit from Highway 50 and going up Mosquito. I had something to deliver to a friend who lives on Mosquito Road, and I said, how do I get out of here? He said, just follow him. So, I did, up Mosquito to Clay Street, to Coleman, to Bedford, to Spring Street, back to Highway 50. None of these streets are built to handle this kind of traffic load, and Mosquito, Coleman, Bedford, and Spring are not in good condition now. They are on the list for fixing. Main Street closures are not helping, and with these Main Street events, no amount of stoplight tinkering will solve it. We need to reevaluate these Main Street closure events. I think the original purpose for these events on Main Street was to attract visitors to Placerville. It's not working anymore. Instead, they have become a reason to avoid Placerville. We need to do some reconfiguring of those Main Street events. There's only a few of them that I think are really germane to Main Street and to Placerville. The Festival of Lights, the Christmas Parade, the Trick or Treat on Main Street, the wagon train, all the rest of it could go to the fairgrounds, and it would, and so the fairgrounds is going to charge a little more. Well, too bad, we cannot afford to destroy all these streets, Mosquito and Clay and Coleman and Bedford and Spring, and all the impacts that it's having to all these neighborhoods and people who live here, just to have a few more drunks on Main Street.
Thank you, Sue.
Good evening, Kirk Smith. I didn't plan to say anything until I heard some of the comments offered earlier.
Kirk, could you pull the microphone up a little?
Sure.
Thank you, sir.
And so rightfully about the loss of Brian Ishmael.
We need to reevaluate these Main Street closure events. I think the original purpose for these events on Main Street was to attract visitors to Placerville. It's not working anymore. Instead, they have become a reason to avoid Placerville. We need to do some reconfiguring of those Main Street events. There's only a few of them that I think are really germane to Main Street and to Placerville. The Festival of Lights, the Christmas Parade, the trick-or-treat on Main Street, the wagon train, all the rest of it could go to the fairgrounds. And it would, and so the fairgrounds is going to charge a little more. Well, too bad, we cannot afford to destroy all these streets, Mosquito and Clay and Coleman and Bedford and Spring, and all the impacts that it's having to all these neighborhoods and people who live here, just to have a few more drunks on Main Street.
Thank you, Sue.
Good evening, Kirk Smith. I didn't plan to say anything until I heard some of the comments offered earlier.
Kirk, could you pull the microphone up a little?
Sure.
Thank you, sir.
And so rightfully about the loss of Brian Ishmael, there's really nothing to add, except I heard a couple of comments that seemed political in nature, and it was troublesome. I've had occasion over the years to say great things about our law enforcement officers in this community. They're really exceptional, both the Police Department and the Sheriff's Office. I've encountered law enforcement officers in one to two dozen different agencies throughout my life. They're uniformly high-quality, but Brian was exceptional. And the reason is, if you only met him once, he would just exude sincerity. You couldn't imagine him getting angry at anyone. And the chief tells the story, as he told me at the bell tower, that when Brian gave out tickets, people would thank him. Whoever thought of that? But it's because the guy communicates honesty. You know that he's there to help and serve you, and, and it's not out of meanness, it's because he cares about you. And, you know, you know this guy was a straight shooter. So, right now, it bothered me that in this room, I remember, the room was packed with people who expressed their opposition to SB 54. And now you want to bring up that subject? That acrimony, that kind of divisiveness is not what I would associate with him. If you want to pay tribute to the guy, replicate his values. Ask yourself, no matter what it is you're doing, are you acting in a way that's decent? Are you acting in a way that's honest and respects other people? That's the way you value this particular person. It's not just because it was a fallen first responder, it's because it was somebody who was remarkably special because of those values. I don't want to see this loss used that way. And then because of some political speeches in the last week or two, we get the idea that there's a nexus between that loss and we're going to be able to prevent it from happening in the future. It's something that should be looked at with a lot of thought and care. I was at the Board of Supervisors meeting when it was packed with another group of people, quite different, holding up their copies of the Constitution, sometimes revealing that they really hadn't read them or understood them very well. It reminded me like of Chairman Mao when you hold up the Red Book. But we don't need that kind of divisiveness. We need education, thought, and looking at it. And if you're going to propose legislation, let's, let's have some thoughtful consideration of what it is before saying, "Hey, Chief, Sheriff, we'll give you a blank check. Whatever it is you want, we'll give it to you." Now, I regard him as a personal friend as well. And even though we have differences on the subjects, I'll tell you, the sheriff will always say, "Give me a call, we'll talk about it." And he does. And I hope that's what you do next time, instead of avoid making it political.
Is there another member of the public wishing to address the council on a non-agendized Good evening, sir.
Good evening. I didn't really know what I was going to talk about tonight, because there's about 100 different issues that we could actually talk about that's on the table with this investigation I have going. But I am going to touch on the Clay Street project. The widening of that bridge is not the solution to create Clay Street problems. I can see by the map here, there's some sort of water, something needs to be placed in Cedar Ravine there, and on top of that, it'll just increase the speed going down Cedar Ravine and going straight through there. And I see that it's on, on the table to be accepted at 1.7 million dollars, and it's in the woodworks, and that's what you've approved the fix should be. When they're telling you what the fix should be, because it doesn't do any good when you run right into the abutment of the freeway. Like you said, you need, you need crossing lights already for the bicycle path. You've got to move the drug monument. You've got to do all these different things, and what is it going to do? There's none of this traffic's coming off of Cedar Ravine. It's all coming from Broadway down to Main, on the weekends or whatever it may be. It's not coming from Cedar Ravine. Something else is going on at Cedar Ravine. And I'm not for the Clay Street bridge widening.
Thank you for your comment, sir. We appreciate it. Is there another member of the public wishing to address the council on a non-agendized item? Seeing no one else approaching the podium, I'll go ahead and close public comment, and let's see, I think I have a couple of questions for Cleve, a couple of the issues that were brought up. First one, Sue Rodman mentioned the Main Street closures, and yours is, you have the magic four events that seem to be pretty standard in the comment going to the fairgrounds. Where is the Main Street committee's process at right now? How prolonged is that? Because we have, I don't know if Sue was aware that we've got a committee working on reviewing that very issue.
We, we do, and Terry is putting together some policies for us, and we need to come back together as soon as he has those done. We're working on those right now, so.
Okay.
We're working on it.
You're working on it? All right. So, is there any way for Sue to issue her comments directly?
I think there will be at some point, once we get something there. I mean, we, I took her input tonight, I've heard that, and we've heard that from others, and we actually, in our first meeting, had similar discussions, in fact.
Exactly.
So, I think we're on the same, you know, agreement that maybe what needs to happen there, but we need to develop some policies to determine how that, how that would actually happen.
And did you say that when we make the final, our final decision, that it will be put out for public meeting comments?
Yeah, we'll bring, my intention is that we would bring that back to the council for review and approval, so, yeah.
You know, prior to that, we're looking at bringing the Downtown Merchants Association in to the conversation as well.
Right.
Thank you very much. So we are working, excuse me, we are working on it, Sue, and it is recognized that something does need to change to be successful and not be drowning, and as you've noted, destroying our streets. Just to let the Ingrams know, I had been asked to check on the status of the cameras that are part of the Transit District security system, and those are now being, that does feed now into the dispatch center. Commander Wren's comment was that the, it could use a better lens, so we are, I've sent that back to Transit staff. The executive director over at Transit is looking into seeing what we can do to work on either changing the camera completely or just getting a different style of setting. But yeah, our dispatchers do monitor that, and hopefully, they'll be able to get an even better picture here soon. One of the things I know also that came up a few weeks ago was the need for, actually, a different style of barricade over on the, you know, in the Spring Street area, Clay Street area, to something that's a little bit more sturdy. I noticed Mr. Veerkamp's has several of them, kind of an upright four-foot-type double-leg thing, that's less, less easy to knock over, shall we say. The other thing that I think their numbers have proved is the doubling of traffic. And I was, I had the mistaken thought that a lot of this was coming off the freeway, but a lot of it is coming off of Carson Road, and then coming across Dimity, which is ridiculously small, and then coming over to Mosquito, and then going over to Clay Street. So, perhaps a city engineer in the police department could come up with a no-right-turn movement from, let's see, what would that be, southbound Mosquito Road onto Clay Street, Saturdays and Sundays. Big cities use weird times and days all the time to control traffic, you know, no parking on Tuesdays from 2:00 to 3:00 for the street sweeper. We need to get inventive. We've got that kind of traffic flow now, unfortunately, so we need to, we need to get a bigger box of toys.
Mr. Mayor, I was just going, I was actually going to bring this up on future agenda items, but I agree, I think this is a bigger issue in terms of just that overall weekend traffic coming through Clay Street, Coleman, everywhere, and I think we've got to kind of tackle it kind of holistically. I mean, I, I agree, we've got to do things to help the, our residents in those, in those areas, too, but to the extent that we can do this as a, you know...
A whole project.
A whole project, I think would be great.
Today, Tuesday morning, 10:00, we couldn't get here to our meeting.
Right.
It, it's ridiculous what's, and Main Street was open. So, we got problems in Placerville.
Well, they're good problems, because we've got lots of people that want to be here. Like, Cleve and I talked about the Waiter Tree Tremming contractor just down the road here, in front of a business just two doors down. Had an encroachment permit, everything was fine, they were doing a wonderful job, traffic control. You cannot be on this part of Main Street during the workdays anymore.
About 10:00 in the morning.
You've got to be off the road by 8:00. Those are good problems to have, so easily to solve. But, yeah, I just wanted to recognize, we've had a lot of input from the Clay Street neighborhood, so I just wanted to let the Ingrams and their neighbors know that we are working on that. So, I agree completely, it needs to be comprehensively handled.
And I have to, and I have to say, local traffic are using those roads, too.
Oh, yes.
We, we had this discussion at the, I believe it was the previous council meeting, that we were going to bring this back for a future agenda item, and, and looking at traffic calming measures?
Yes.
Is that in progress? Okay.
Yeah, we're working on that with the city engineer's office, and we've had several discussions about it. We're working on putting together those, those options, because, you know, I just want to mention, I heard two things here tonight. I heard primarily is the, how do we keep traffic, you know, reduce the number of vehicles? But the second thing is, is the speeding, and that's what the traffic calming is regarding the speeding, not necessarily regarding reducing the numbers. That's a whole, I think there's two different things there that we're, we've got on our plates to consider, so I just want to mention that, so.
Thank you. Thank you for, thank you very much. All right, moving on to item 8, consent calendar. All items will be considered under one motion as a routine unless a member of the council wishes to have an item removed for further consideration. There are also, is there any member of the, first, let me ask, is there any member of the council that wishes to have an item removed for further discussion?
I would just like to recognize the, the level of income that has been, that we have reseen. I don't know what you...
Item 8.4?
The increase in, or the, the percentage increase in sales tax revenue is significant, and I think it's, you know, it's kind of exciting to see, one, that our city is thriving and successful, and how we're running, and that that's also translating to sales tax dollars coming in to help support our roads and our pipes and such, so.
Dennis, would you like to, I'd be happy to see, I'd be happy to pull that also and have, letting Mr. Warren have two minutes to highlight.
Can you do that in two minutes?
Not three.
Okay. So I'd like to pull that for further discussion.
We'll pull item 8.4 for further discussion.
Thank you.
Again, these are good, these are good problems to have. Is there any other item? Is there any member of the public that wishes to comment on any of the consent calendar items? All right. Is there someone like to make a motion for the balance of the consent?
I'll move.
Second?
Moved by Vice Mayor, Sarah goes to second by Councilmember Borelli. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Acuna?
Hi.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Motion carries. Mr. Evas, I think we finally got you your SB 2 money. We got it to the right city. Thank you for, thank you for your patience, sir. All right, well, item's pulled, that was 8.4, and this is a great report, and something that I'm glad that Councilmember Thomas brought up, because I certainly was going to also. These are great numbers, and HDL does the business tracking for us, and Dave, if you would like to give us your report on the highlights of this latest, latest report for the, for the, what, second quarter, right?
Yes.
It's all yours, two minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council.
I'm just kidding.
So, in your packet, you have the Q2, quarter 2 for 2019, for your Bradley Burne sales tax, which is your, your general fund sales tax. And the quarter actually ended with a 16.4% year-over-year growth factor, which is phenomenal. However, the devil's in the details, and the reason that is, is there were some pretty major adjustments due to the state's financial software. If you account for those positive adjustments, it actually ended up being a flat quarter. However, when you look at the year-over-year, year-over-year, on the first page on this document here, kind of on the bottom corner, you can see that year-over-year sales tax increased from 4.7 million to 5.3. So, nice jump in your growth there, and then your Measure J sales tax jumped from 984,000 to 1.1 million. Same for your Measure H, those are both quarter percent sales tax, and then your Measure L, it was the first year for Measure L in 1718, an entire year, went from 1.9 million to 2.3. So, very good. And then on the back page, you can see how, per capita of sales, this isn't sales tax, it's sales on the top right-hand corner, you can see that Placerville continues to far exceed the performance of the county, unincorporated county, and California because of our high tourism and being the county seat on the western slope, so. And then, let's see, four, we already talked about Measure HJ. That's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Now, those are great highlights, Dave. Is there any questions? Mr. Warren, what he's presented?
I have a question.
Karen, please, go ahead.
Um, how does this square with what the assumptions made during the budget process for this year? Is it in line with what we were assuming?
I don't have the exact figure, but I want to say we were about $200,000 above our forecast for fiscal year 1819.
Okay.
That was a great question, thank you. That is what he will focus on. Dave, you know, we went, since we went to HDL and we've gotten these reports, this has just been a massive improvement, and it is fully transparent. We've got our top 25 businesses in here, and thank you to all of them. We started out with a top 10 and 15, and now we're up to a top 25, and I think this is a good, this is a good quantity. It really gives us a cross-section of what's going on and what parts of Placerville that this income is coming from. So, no other questions? Would someone like to make a motion to, I guess we're receiving and filing this, right, Dave?
Correct.
I'll move. Second.
Moved in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Dave, and we'll keep our fingers crossed. Item 10, we have two ordinances this evening. Waive the first reading and introduce an ordinance adopting changes to Title IX of the Placerville Municipal Code related to parking. And Cleve, we, we went through this at our last meeting, and we've added several improvements, I think, and are we ready to go?
Thank you, Mayor and Council, I think we are. The changes from the last meeting are shown actually in your attached draft ordinance, so you can see what those changes were that were made. Probably the most significant that I will note is, we added some areas for no parking. Those include Chapel Street. Chapel Street was already in there, however, it wasn't, for some reason, the entire Chapel Street, which should be, and so that was revised to make it the entire length of Chapel Street. Clay Street under Highway 50, it now shows both directions as no parking. Manor Drive, Green Street, and Sherman Street are also, were also added, Sherman was only one, one side of the street, we put no parking. Green Street, I believe, is the entire portion of Green Street and Manor Drive.
We didn't really talk about it, and I was thinking about that. There's no parking on one, it's just as you come, as you enter Manor Drive, it's kind of, you, you go down an incline, and it's kind of a blind, it's, it, not kind of, it is a blind corner, and so the one side is painted, the curb is painted red, but the other one isn't, and for some reason, the folks that, some of the folks, once in a while, from, that work up at the county, the old, it's a county building, they park there, and it's really, it's, as we're trying to exit, we have to pull over into the second lane, and they're parked there, and it's a very short distance where people come over the hill, and, you know, we're sitting ducks as they do that. So, anyway, that's kind of what I, that was the only reason I wanted to bring up.
Yeah, what, what we included in here was both sides of Manor Drive from Tunnel Street to the, to the terminus, so the entire lane.
Okay, great, okay. Because I was told it couldn't be done a while back, but, okay. I'm glad to hear that.
And we decided, Green Street? That is absolutely narrow, so that should be no parking both sides, all the way up to...
It makes it interesting if there's cars parked.
Yeah.
You can hardly get two cars passing, let alone, even if somebody's...
Again, this is another one of those I see as an improvement for fire safety, emergency services. Sherman Street, Cleve, we went, you and I went back and forth, I had mine in a north and south, and he was east and west. What do we decide, the apartment building side or the Marshall Hospital annex?
We eliminated it on the apartment building side. So, the north, what I called the north side.
Okay, yes, now that works. That's the same side that the driveway's on, so there's already a limited amount of parking on that side.
Right.
Because of the driveway cut, so that makes sense. Again, we want to have that open. There's going to be some disappointed cars on Washington Street when Nick gets that other sign back in, and there's, there's at least two cars that are stored right now. It's not a problem, as long as you don't need to get down the street. All right. Is there any questions for Cleve on anything else, or open public comment on this item? All right, any member of the public wishing to address the council on item 10.1, the revisions to the Placerville parking ordinance?
Sue Rodman, again, one of your original draftees to work on this and I think we've just about got it. And two comments.
Oh, no. Just about.
Oh, just about. Thanks for eliminating the parking on Clay Street at that overpass. I think that was really a public safety issue. I'm really glad and thank you, Councilmember Borelli, for your support of doing that. And the second one is one that I missed on some of my other readings of this in, under Placerville Drive, the no parking, there's a duplicate. The first two parking, no parkings are duplicates, so we could eliminate one of those. Sorry I failed to catch that on the one before, 'cause it's unchanged from the previous.
What page is that on, Sue?
Oh, I didn't write the page number down, but when you get into that section where it's talking about all the, the streets by street.
One is northerly and one is southerly.
One's north and one's south.
Really? I thought they were both exactly the same. The first two.
One says on the east side from Ray Lawyer Drive to a point 850 feet northerly, on the east side from Ray Lawyer Drive to a point 800 feet, 850 feet southerly. So, they're.
Oh.
Going opposite directions.
Okay, I missed that.
Yep.
So, we're good.
So, no apologies necessary.
All right. It was a test, though, and we passed, so this is good. Thank you, Sue. She spends a tremendous amount of time proofreading for us and I appreciate it. Good evening, Kirk.
I, she could help proofread my stuff, needs it. Listen, I want to, uh, thank you for addressing the subject and, and suggest that of all the issues that merchants are concerned with and have been for years, parking is certainly a big one. As you know, Combelix, after 130 years of closing and it's the same kind of reason it happens for people or it's just like businesses, they don't go on in perpetuity. Allen's gone, the daughters are tired. But I can tell you, over the years, I don't know of anything they mentioned more often that troubled them in business than the lack of parking. So, I think when you take parking away, you should be mindful of adding parking to it. For example, uh, down next to the courthouse, they have all this space in the back that they don't use on the weekend. Ask them, when you're talking to them about exchanging properties, hey, you want a, you want a post office building, you want a phone company building, we'll give you this, we'll give you that. Ask them to allow us to use the property that's right next to the post office. That's about 30 spaces. Open that up. Uh, right now, it's being used, but it's like a speakeasy. If you know about it, you go ahead and do it whether you should or not and get away with it. But why not do it so that you show that you care about the merchants who are struggling with parking that's gotten worse and worse over the years? Again, when you take away parking, be mindful of what you can do to add it. And I know, I make so many suggestions, if you overlook this one a few years ago, I don't mind. But I did suggest that you do that with reference to the post office building. You've got all those spaces, make it open to the public, advertise it, make sure the Democrat knows that public can do, can, can use it for who knows how long. But again, we need more parking, thank you.
Thank you, Kirk. Any other public comment on 10.1, the city parking ordinance? All right, seeing no one else approaching the podium, I'll close public comment on the item and bring it back and, uh, I will ask a question about, I know I've asked and Patty probably has too, about the courthouse on the weekends. Have we talked to the county about?
I don't know that we've specifically, I mean, two different things. He was speaking to the, the post office.
Right, but he also mentioned the courthouse.
Behind, behind the courthouse, um, I know people park there all the time.
I always put your name in the window when I park there, City Manager.
Um, we can approach them on that. I'm not sure for, absolutely sure if the county or the state controls that. It's county property, but the state runs the courthouse, but.
I know, I know at one time, way in the past, we did approach them and they weren't friendly to the idea, but I.
Really?
Yes. And I think that we should do it again.
It doesn't make sense when you drive back there and you've got all these empty places and.
Yeah, they, they had some excuse for it and I can't remember what it was, but we did, yeah. Can you, Kirk, if you could give them a.
Kirk Smith said.
Um, but I certainly think it would be worthwhile.
I do too.
Even if we post a sign that points in that direction and says, "Go ahead and park here on the weekend."
It's okay.
I mean, if we don't give tickets, who will?
Yeah, the court gonna come down and give tickets? I don't want to go there.
Did I say that out loud?
It does, uh, it does deserve and, and again, Kirk talks about the scarcity parking and that's a good problem. The restaurants and everybody are busy. Those, those spots could be well-used on Saturdays and Sundays.
Well, and even folks that want to visit the arts, you know, uh, displays and stuff. I mean, it's a, you know.
All right. We've so noted. All right. Is someone like, if there's no other discussion, we've, we've gotten, we've passed the success with Sue Rodman, so that is a step. She's worked hard on this one. Would someone like to make a motion to, uh, approve this item?
I'll make, I'll make a motion to waive the first reading and approve the ordinance.
Introduce, yes.
I'll second.
Introducing, she's introducing the ordinance and waiving the first reading?
Yep.
All right, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So, in 30 days, we'll be back again. Mr. Driscoll, is that correct?
Yes.
And then how many days after it becomes law?
Thirty.
Awesome, we're getting close. All right, thank you, everybody, for your patience. If you want a tedious job, try to sit down and start reading street by street, the parking It will burn your eyeballs out. All right, moving on to item 10.2, uh, waive the first reading and introduce, um, an ordinance amending the title, chapter six, uh, Title VI, Chapter 19 of the Placerville City Code regulating camping on public or private property. I believe Chief Ortega has the report this evening. Good evening, Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, this, um, this ordinance is designed to update our anti-camping ordinance and I'm not going to read the whole thing, I'm going to go over some key points, um, mainly the reasons for this. As the council's aware, there's a lot of, um, camps that are unhealthy, unsafe and pose a public, uh, health crisis, uh, if we're just left unattended. So, we were looking for some other, uh, tools to give our police officers to address this. I just want to say early in this process, we are not, I repeat, not here to criminalize the homeless. We are not here to pick on the homeless and we're not here to, uh, single them out for any enforcement actions. What we are here to do is protect the public health. When we allow these camps to just get overgrown with debris and rubbish, as we've all seen, uh, we can have some real problems with hazardous materials being in there and even, um, some vermin infestations, which we do not want because that can spread to the rest of the city. That goes along with our public safety. It is inhumane for us to allow these folks to just camp unattended and not try to assist them. Our police department over the past year and a half, actually two and a half years that I've been here, but for sure over the last four to six months, has made a concerted effort to make sure that we are assisting these folks in every way possible by, um, assigning an officer full-time to our hot team, which brings all of the county resources into the city of Placerville from the Department of Health and Human Services of El Dorado County to help them. So, I just don't want this to be misperceived. I've seen some comments on social media that we're, we're picking on these folks and anything, uh, that is the furthest thing from, uh, what we're trying to do. What we are trying to do is keep our entire community, including those that are homeless and have other substance abuse and, um, issues. Uh, this just gives us another, uh, tool to, um, assist them and it does distinguish in the ordinance between public property and private property. Private property is easily, um, dealt with with the private property owner. And so, there are a lot of legal, um, issues going with this ordinance and John and I talked ahead, he's the attorney, I'm not, so I'm going to let, um, the city attorney address the legal issues associated with this, including some concerns with how it, um, may be in conflict with the Boise decision, which it is not, and I'm going to let him go over that.
Thanks, Chief. As the chief indicated, a lot of this was product of the Boise versus Martin case, uh, which basically held that, um, you cannot punish, that means you can't cite, arrest or jail, a homeless person for camping on public property when there's no shelter available. Our current ordinance, uh, does not pass that test, so we really have an ordinance presently that's unenforceable. Um, and it's there, the police can do certain things to help people move along and, with the hot team and everything else that they're doing, they're trying to do it in a very humane and civil way, but they lack the tool of being able to say, "Okay, if you don't move along, we're going to have to arrest you or cite you." So, they're, they're without, basically, the force to enforce the ordinance to be redundant. Um, I know Commander Wren has worked long and hard with the hot team and in his workings with the hot team, found that the county was developing an ordinance to try and address the Boise decision. And he brought that to me and we looked at it and felt that there's some tweaks that we could make, but this is somewhat patterned after that, that proposed ordinance. I don't know where that is with the county, do you, Chief? If they've adopted that yet?
I, you know, I, I don't know, I'm sorry.
But I know they're, they're in, getting to the final stages of that. Excuse me. The, um, Boise decision basically says that if there's no shelter available, you can't arrest, cite or prosecute someone, uh, who is, does not have the means to obtain shelter. And what we tried to do in this ordinance is use the Boise decision as a basis and if you look at it in section 619.1, uh, actually, no, I'm sorry, 619.3, available shelter, that language in there really is patterned after the Boise decision to determine when shelter would be available. If a person can pay for it, then shelter's not unavailable. If a person chooses not to use it, shelter's not unavailable. If a person can't use it because a religious observance is required as a condition, and that was one of the situations in the Boise case. One of the shelters in Boise required that you participate in a religious, uh, observance and the court said, "No, you can't make people do that." So, if that's the situation, then shelter's unavailable. So, what we tried to do is, I say, pattern this in terms of when shelter is available and unavailable after the parameters of the Boise decision. What we did is we provided that when shelter is unavailable pursuant to the decision, you can camp without risk of citation on city-owned open space. Basically, other places are prohibited, streets, sidewalks, parks, uh, other public places other than city-owned open space. And open space is defined basically as undeveloped city-owned property. Where is that? There's a number of areas around the city. I can't tell you off the top of my head, but I know there's areas that we have, the lower Main Street area, there's areas up on Broadway, there's areas, uh, to the north of the city that would constitute city open space. Uh, so there is that space available and that's an area where homeless can go. And we tried to, as I say, meet the parameters of the Boise decision in constructing this ordinance. Private property has its own set of rules set forth in the ordinance. Basically, if you have the permission of the, uh, property owner, then you can camp there for a limited period of time. With that, I guess I would address any other specific questions that members of the council might have.
I have a question.
Daytime camping?
So, what, what you just said, I think, it really changes a lot of people's perception of what we keep hearing, that they're allowed to, like, I keep, especially hearing about Sacramento, that they're camping on the sidewalk in front of City Hall. That is not allowed on, on street, on.
This ordinance would not allow it.
Right. And so, and we're within our legal rights to say that. Why can't Sacramento say that?
Well, Sacramento's ordinance is, was at least a mirror of our ordinance. We pattern our current existing ordinance after Sacramento's ordinance. I don't believe they've done anything to change it. Now, when I was looking at ideas and how to maybe come up with something that could meet the test of the Boise case, I found that Redding had done something very similar to what we have done. They identified areas, they, um, uh, also, um, defined unavailable in terms of when a shelter would be available and not. I think their areas where they allow camping are a little more broad than what we have. But, um, again, the Boise case does not say, in fact, it specifically says in a footnote, you, just, the case is not meant to say that you cannot prohibit camping in certain areas. So, taking advantage of that language, we have, in this proposed ordinance, prohibited camping in certain areas where it doesn't make sense. I mean, streets, sidewalks, curbs, you know, parking lots, parks, those kinds of things. So, those are all specified in here. We also provided, as the city manager reminded me, that, um, you can't camp during the daytime. Uh, even if shelter is available, uh, you can't camp during the daytime from, I think we have eight to, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And there is an exception in there during rainfall or when the temperature's below 50 degrees, those sort of things.
So, essentially, no permanent or semi, sort of permanent structures that could be set up in these areas?
Correct.
They would have to come down daily?
Yes.
If you had a tent or sleeping bag or whatever it might be?
Exactly. Okay. Any other questions? There's none. John, thank you very much for your portion. Chief, did you have some additional information?
Just to tag on to what Councilmember Saragosa said, we're trying to also in there prevent these permanent structures that we have found built all over the city that, uh, not only constitute a health hazard, but a fire hazard because then people try to cook inside of these wooden structures and that's the last thing we need. So, that was the reason for that provision in there.
Thank you, Chief. And is there any questions for the chief on what's been presented?
Well, I guess I got a question either way. Uh, we, we have had, I mean, one of the, I shouldn't say one of, well, one of the expenses the city has incurred is, um, trash and all the, um, waste that goes along with camping. Now, I know that if I go out in the wilderness with the federal government, they require me to have X, Y, Z, like a toilet or some way, e- even if it's a bucket with a bag in it and a way to dispose of it. Um, these are requirements that the federal government has when I go on their federal property to utilize, um, a river, going down a river. Is there any, I mean, I, you know, you haul in what you haul out, your trash, your, your waste and everything. Is that any, is that included in here? Because that's a, that's a significant cost that we have with the city, is they just, you know.
It's not included. Excuse me. It's not included within there. Uh, there is a prohibition against camping within 100 feet of the high water mark of a waterway, but there's nothing specific like what you've just mentioned, Councilmember Thomas. That could be covered under litter laws, quite frankly, uh, littering and that sort of thing, but no, in this ordinance, there's nothing that addresses that per se.
You know, there's a, there's a lot of people in the community that want to help them and, and one of the, one of the aspects of helping them would be also helping our community with, with the challenges we have with them. And this is not to say that those that are having challenges with homelessness or choose homelessness, that we, that there's not some way that we could help them be more mindful of our, of our city property and how they, and how they take care of their space that they're in. And I don't know if there's, if it's a possibility to, to have some recommendation, some requirement that they have even the most rudimentary facility to utilize as opposed to nothing. And that I imagine if we talk to the, some of the communities out there that support these, they would actually acknowledge that that is an important part of, you know, them being there and, and helping them have some dignity in how they live and, and at the very least, it would also help the city not have to clean up a biohazard waste after they leave.
We've also got those that, which I am experiencing out at my building, that just decide because I have a alleyway, that that's where they can go and go to the bathroom. And I, I, I don't know, I don't know what our, there are, are help, we have some groups that have just such kind hearts and they're trying so hard to help these folks, but I don't know if that message, and maybe the chief can clear this matter up with me, I don't know if that message is, can be taught to some of those folks. I, I don't know. You, you, I'm sure you and your officers deal with this all the time in trying to get a point across and I don't know.
So, um, that's a very good question, Councilmember Borelli. Our rough estimate is that there, these homeless folks fall into a couple of groups. There's groups that are addicted to substance abuse and have behavioral health problems, um, so that can be combined with mental illness, which has caused their homelessness, okay? And those are the folks that are actually willingly and receptive to the offers of assistance that we provided them through our hot team, through the county, through all the nonprofit groups that have graciously stepped up to help the city in addressing this problem. There's the other group that's around 25 to 30% that, um, they just want, they're not going to listen to us and any message we try to give to them to not be homeless falls on deaf ears. message we try to give to them to not be homeless falls on deaf ears. So quite honestly, those are the ones that we're going to deal with in an enforcement capacity. And those are the ones that we work with the district attorney to make sure that when we arrest somebody for the 30th time in six months for being under the influence or drunken public, that we need them to be held in custody for 30, 60, or 90 days to dry out and get into some program. Your area, it sounds like it's kind of a gray area that you're talking about, the people that camp behind your building and...
They don't camp. They just...
Okay, they, they relieve themselves.
Yes.
I don't have an answer for that, other than maybe some design suggestions. I can have one of my staff go over to your building and, you know, gate it off. We always tell businesses in any way, shape, or form, if they can secure their properties, to deter these folks from camping in their doorways, or their alleyways, or their porch area. But quite honestly, to your original question, there's just some people that are not going to listen to any recommendation. And that's where we're going to get involved. I hope that answers your question, sort of?
It does. And, and that's what I, I think, and that's what I'm being told, is that these folks just, there's no getting through to them.
Just some of them, not all of them?
No, but those that are, I, I found toothbrushes and...
Right.
You know, all that kind of stuff.
Well, we find much worse in those areas.
I'm sure you do, but for some reason, like I say, and, and I, I cannot, I can't fence that off. There, I mean, there's no possible way. I've trimmed all the trees up. I've got lighting out there. I've done everything that I can, you know, but at night, it's dark and, you know, nobody's around, so I guess that's when it happens. I don't know. But anyway, I, I was, it was just a question.
Chief, what's, I don't know, is there a percentage of those that are sort of parolees that are part of our homeless population?
So there are a couple of, yeah, there, I, I don't know the, the exact percentage, but I just know from month to month, the way that Penal Code Section 290, which is a sex registrant section, I still don't understand this, even as a cop of 32 years, that you can be homeless and be a registered sex offender. But when they are homeless, they have to come to the police department within a 30-day window every month and register. So there are those that are out there. And yeah, periodically, we will find people with warrants for various charges, everything from misdemeanors to serious felonies, in some of these encampments. So again, that's another public safety reasoning that we're using to have this ordinance updated.
Thank you.
If there's no other questions, Karen, did you have anything before I open up public comments?
I have some comments, but I can wait until after.
All right, thank you. All right, I'm going to open public comment on item 10.2, the first reading and introduction of the new ordinance regarding camping on public and private property. And someone would like to address the council on this item? Please come forward, state your name for the record. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Jamie Butler. I, I don't have a lot of knowledge about this, but I'm going to make some comments anyway and hope that they don't sound too ignorant. I completely understand the reason for this ordinance. I think it is a public safety issue. But I think that the same reasoning that Kurt gave with, with the parking, if you're going to take something away, you have to give something else to them. And Patty, you were talking about how do you deter people from doing, from relieving themselves in places where they shouldn't? And to me, the obvious answer is supply a place for them to relieve themselves. Is, you know, I'm wondering if the open space allowance that you're giving the homeless population is going to solve the problem? Because it, doesn't the open space that you guys are considering letting the homeless be at have the same conditions that you're trying to address, which is lack of restroom facilities, garbage pickup, lack of sanitation services? Doesn't the open space have that problem as well? So it seems to me that if you're going to do this, help them to have a place to relieve themselves, help them to have a place to go, at least give them signs and say something to the effect of, "You're allowed to go here." It just seems to me to be common sense that you, you know, you just can't keep shuffling these human beings around and feel good about yourselves. Because I, I know from the experience talking to all of you, that you are compassionate human beings and that you do want to help, but that there is a problem, and that the homeless issue is incredibly complicated. But I do think that there is a part of the homeless population that would benefit from something like the Community Haven that Art Edwards set up. And maybe the open space would be a place to try that again for a certain population of homeless, that I think would solve a lot of the problem, at least for one group. And then another group could be taken care of in another way. But can we think about, instead of taking things away and of how are we going to deal with this problem, think about it from the standpoint of a homeless person? Where am I going to go to pee? Where am I going to go to change clothes? Where am I going to go to have a shower? Where am I going to go to, you know, have some privacy? Where am I going to go to sleep? And if you think about it from that standpoint, maybe we can come up with some solutions. I know people are working on this, both immediate and long-term. But I do think that the city of Placerville is compassionate enough to find some kind of a solution for at least some of the population. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. We appreciate your comments. Is there another member of the audience wishing to address the council on 10.2? Good evening.
Hi, I'm Sean Frame, resident of Placerville. I didn't intend to address tonight, but in listening to 10-2, I, I understand the legal requirements for the change in the ordinance. We have to remember, these are people we're talking about. And we know from every study, this isn't, we aren't the only municipality anywhere dealing with homeless. There's a lot of information out there. We know that the actual solution to homelessness is largely providing permanent housing, not temporary housing, not open space for camping. And I will be coming back in a couple of weeks. I know there is an opportunity in this community to have a permanent housing solution at the Armory. And it's only for you to ask the state to provide this land for that use. So I would reiterate what Jamie said, which is, if you're going to take something away, you have to bring something back. And if you don't want to have these problems, you should consider a solution. For the people who are out there living on the street right now, they won't know where it's okay for them to go and camp until you, they encounter law enforcement. At that point, it's too late. You're using law enforcement resources to deal with what is a human issue. And for those who are in that 25 to 30 percent, I mean, think, think of it from their point of view. If they have nowhere to go on a permanent basis, and you're offering them at best either a night in jail or a night in a temporary shelter, what incentive is there for them to leave homelessness? If you tell somebody, "You must be sober tonight so that you can have a roof over your head," and they're thinking about, "Well, where am I going to be a week from now?" You're not solving the problem. You're kicking the can down the road. So I would hope that, as part of this process, you're thinking about solutions and not just changing an ordinance and kicking the can down the road. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Another member of the public, excuse me, wished to address the council on 10.2.
Kirk Smith, I think the police department is correct. They have, like the city as a whole, displayed great sensitivity to those involved, and it is a complex issue. You provide shelter, and it won't really always work. There are some people who just won't go there. But I think I'd like to know a little bit more about the problem, like the costs. I know that I saw a big operation, I guess it was last year, down by Hangtown Creek, as you come in off of Placerville Drive. It just took an enormous effort on the part of the city to clean up. And then a few months ago, it was with, you know, the Candle Group, a, a public interest group, that came in with the city's help, did a great job of cleaning up. And they said it had a big, a big dumpster out there that got filled quickly. I don't know how many dumpsters went through. So some information about the costs that we're experiencing would be important. It's also troublesome that we keep talking about the homeless, and it's really not matter so much the homeless as it is a certain segment of the homeless that are homeless because of, of drug usage. And I know that I, before, over the space of 15 years, talked about how those problems that we used to hear about up at Hangtown Haven were creeping up all over. And I think that Patty was describing, wherever you are, you're describing the same problems that they were having a few years ago up there. And I know I described how we had campsites up on the hill. There was about a 15-foot diameter fire from someone starting a fire to keep warm. And we had to put up no trespassing signs. I remember telling you how that pained us, because nobody ever did that. And, you know, there was, I had one guy arrested because it was the second time on the property, but by the time he came back the second, you couldn't understand him. He was that drugged out, that brain damaged. So I see lots of, some problems with the ordinance, but I'm going to, if it were me voting, I would defer to the city to give them discretion to use that tool. And what are the problems? For one thing, in the Boise case, when it talks about if you give them shelter, I think that what the court's talking about is adequate shelter. So if you had 100 people needing shelter and you provided six spots, that wouldn't be adequate. And, and I don't know that comparing us to Sacramento quite helps us, because Sacramento has spent an enormous amount of money. And the, the Mayor Steinberg has just recently talked about spending millions more. So we're not in that league. So there can be some problems, if there are, you might find suits, who knows? But I would defer to the city, because you need some tools to address it, because it's a very costly, very hazardous problem. And it, and it is not, you know, an innocent, nonviolent kind of thing, because it does work with crime, goes hand in hand, I'm afraid. So I applaud you for taking that step.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Another member of the public wishing to address the council on this item?
Sue Rodman. I think this is a much-needed and timely update to Placerville city ordinances. We do have to take this one step at a time, and it seems like this is a good first step. We do have to limit where people are allowed to, to just camp out. And saying, "No, these are, these are places where you may not just set up a tent anyplace you want." I think we have to do that. We have to make, we have the right to limit for the purpose of public safety and the, and the public to be able to live there, too. I think the homeless definitely have a problem. We are definitely considerate and helpful, but we need to be able to say, "Okay, there are limits." You have to be able to set limits in order to have a society. And I think this is a good limit to be able to set. I had a couple of comments under section two findings, item C, where it says, "These campers will often cook and heat by open flame," which, comma, "Sparks and embers from open flame pose a significant fire danger." The comma needs to come after flame to clarify that. So that says, the comma...
Okay.
Would read, "These campers will often cook and heat by open flame, comma, which sparks and embers from open fire and open burning poses a significant fire danger and threat." And that's one of the things you have to be able to limit in order to have a safe community for everyone to live in. And the second comment I have is under 1619-8, "Storage and disposal." Right now, it just says, "No property contaminated with hazardous materials will be stored by the police department," but it doesn't say what we would do with those hazardous materials. And I suggest adding, "Any property contaminated with hazardous materials will be immediately collected for disposal and taken to the nearest hazardous disposal site." Probably El Dorado's hazardous materials disposal site.
Good evening.
Good evening, Council. Jackie Now. I want to thank you for bringing this ordinance forward. I think it's really important, as we watch diseases pop up in all other places, that you think about the community as a large and a whole. For those of us who use those open spaces, I really appreciate this coming forward. And, you know, I want to make a comment. People are destroying bathrooms. You know, you, you want sensible answers, and sometimes things are just not going to be sensible, and people are not going to, no matter what solution you come up with, are going to, to fall into that. Patty, I was thinking about what you said recently. My husband and I were walking in a parking lot, not in Placerville, but this problem exists everywhere. And a woman squatted, and she peed between two cars. And my husband looked at me, and he said, "Did you, did I just see what I just saw?" I said, "Yeah." He said, "Isn't that a bathroom right over there?" "Yeah, yeah." And so, you know, sometimes it's just not going to make sense, and you're not going to come up with a solution that's going to work for everyone, and that is an unfortunate reality. But I really do appreciate the council looking out for everyone who lives here. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Is there another member of the public wishing to address the council on this item? Seeing no one else approaching the podium, I'll close public comment on this item, bring it back to the council for a discussion in action. Again, we are introducing this ordinance this evening for the first time, so this is certainly an opportunity to delve into this carefully.
Mr. Mayor, just a comment.
Absolutely.
As I mentioned in my initial remarks, our current ordinance prohibits camping anywhere, and it's unenforceable. This is not, this proposed ordinance is not an attempt to solve the homeless problem. Gosh knows, it's gotten much bigger than this will ever get to. But it is an attempt to at least identify an area where they can camp. Now, it doesn't have to be city open space. It can be any other place that you think would be appropriate. This is just the only place that I could come up with in my mind without input from the council and, and the people who are going to make the decision on this. So I kind of wanted to mention that. And there was a comment about shelter. If you have shelter that will accommodate six people and you've got 100 that want it, well, shelter is unavailable in that situation, and that's very clear. I don't know if there's any other questions that you have as a result of the comments, but I'd be happy to address them if you do.
Thank you, John. Comments, questions for Cleve, or Mr. Driscoll, or the Chief?
Well, I think just comments. In terms of the Armory, you know, we've gone down that road. Unfortunately, it's been designated for long-term affordable housing by the governor's office. And so we can, you know, have another conversation with the governor's office, but as we know, Governor Newsom is pushing extremely hard to build millions of new houses across the state. And so I, I think it would be difficult to get that rezoned into either transitional and/or temporary homeless shelter at that. And then at the juvenile hall, we've talked about this in the past, the courts, the juvenile court is still located at the former juvenile detention facility, and they've shown no interest in wanting to have a, a short-term homeless facility at that location where the court's at, barring them moving themselves. And so the, the two most immediate answers, or at least buildings that would make sense, are not on, are not really options. And so, you know, we have to look at other, other ideas, but I just, you know, for the record, those places have been explored. Unfortunately, they are not options, though.
Thank you for that, Michael. Karen, did you?
Yeah, I've got a couple of comments. First off, I'd like to say that I, I hear all the comments from the public. I completely agree that this should be paired with other efforts to address this issue. I can say that there is a lot of resources being used in an effort to head towards permanent housing by the county. Unfortunately, it's a long process. It's going to be probably a couple of years before anything's accomplished. But there is efforts being made to go in that direction. In the meantime, I do think that we also have a responsibility for public safety and the rights of property owners to take some step to address the issues that we've been having. And this ordinance does this. It's a good first step. I do have kind of a technical issue with paragraph 619-4, unlawful camping, A. It seems like it's saying something that's not what the ordinance intends. To summarize, it says, "When a shelter is available, no camping below..." To summarize, it says, "When a shelter is available, no camping below one hundred feet of the high watermark," but it doesn't specify that there's no camping anywhere when shelter is available, which I think is what we're intending to say. And then it goes on to say that, "When no shelter is available, camping in open space is allowed," and then on the previous page, "Open space is defined as sidewalks, parking lots, parks, et cetera, within or below one hundred feet." So I think we need to take that out of the definition of open space.
On the definition of open space, I'm looking at it, it says, "Open space is unimproved real property owned by the city other than streets, sidewalks, parking lots." So, does that clarify it?
And then, but it still says, "When shelter is available, there's no camping below the one hundred feet of high watermark." But is it, "When shelter is available, there's no camping allowed," period, because there's shelter available?
Correct.
Correct, so-
There's no, "When shelter is available, there's no camping..." Let me just read through it again. Are you reading, you're six nineteen four A one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Maybe if you read it out loud so everybody could-
Maybe if I can add to that. If you take it, I think you can do, say, is, starting up in the second, it is unlawful to camp upon any public property. And then it defines what all those are, and then just skip down to when there is available overnight shelter.
Well, then we'd have to, yeah. I think where the confusion is, because the prohibition, prohibition includes, as you read through, all of those locations, streets, sidewalks, parking lots, et cetera, and you'll see open space in there. And so it basically says that it's prohibited to camp in any one of those places when shelter is available. However, when shelter is not available, you can camp in open space. But we can clean that up to make it so that it's a little, reads a little better, let's put it that way.
Okay.
Yeah. Let me just work on it for a minute.
Well, I think we just need to get rid of within or below one hundred feet on that paragraph, because it says it's unlawful to camp when, you know, within or below one hundred feet when shelter is available. But I think we want to say it's unlawful to camp when shelter is available.
Well, if we delete, "When shelter is available."
Not, "When shelter is available, within one hundred feet." Do you see what I'm saying?
It's the structure of it, that's the problem. The real property within or below one hundred feet of, of the ordinary high watermark of any lake, that's entitled, that's intended to be another area where it's not allowed. It's not, but that's part of the whole sentence, not just that, that end part that talks about when there is available overnight shelter. See, that's-
Okay, yeah.
-cemeteries, and then that is another one, and then corporation yards is another one, that's what it's trying to say. But maybe there is a clearer way to say that, that's what I'm indicating, so. So as far as when there is available overnight shelter, it's not just relating to that real property within or below the hundred feet, a hundred, a hundred feet above the ordinary high watermark. It's not just relating to that, it's related to the entire section.
Everything that's, okay.
Right. But because of the way that particular one is written, it appears to be related just to that area. So, I see what you're saying.
Just move the location of it so it-
If we start out with unlawful to camp any public property, et cetera, including without limitation, and real property within a hundred, and then list all those others after that.
Yeah, I think that would help, yeah.
Yeah, move it to the beginning of that.
Can you make that correction this evening, Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
All right. Karen, did you have another question or comment?
One other comment is the, it being unlawful to sleep in cars parked at night. I mean, there's a lot of reasons why people sleep in cars, if they're driving on a road trip and they're tired, and, and then it allows them to sleep in cars during the day. I don't know. I would be, I would be open if anyone else agrees with me on editing that out, potentially. Because they're already not allowed to park downtown, so it's, you know, that's already taken care of. But I don't know if we want to make it illegal to sleep in cars, because we don't want people driving if they're exhausted. And nobody, or drunk, and nobody sleeps during the middle of the day, so.
What page was that one on, Karen?
That's on page four. Yeah, six nineteen four two.
Oh, okay, right down there, thank you.
Could we do something with the vehicles where it's kind of like the consecutive day camping thing, where, you know, if it was more than five days or seven, whatever the consecutive was, then, you know, we'd be, we'd move towards enforcement as opposed to, you know, one night. That way, you're getting towards the habitual-
Yeah.
-person in a vehicle, but you're not, you know, if they're tired, or if it's just, maybe they're passing through, or they just need a couple of days to get into housing or something. This week, stop the chronicness of it, but not absolutely.
Well, you know, what was amazing to me is to read, like in Sacramento, the number of students that are sleeping in their cars.
Right.
And so they're, they're changing their laws to allow it.
Right. I mean, and the reality is, I, I'd rather have somebody in a vehicle than-
Out on the street.
Out on the street.
Mr. American, I just add to that-
Yes, sir, I was just going to call on you.
So, on, like a section like that, you know, the officers are going to use your judgment. If it's a guy coming across the country, and he just decided he can't make it to Sacramento, for whatever reason, he pulls over to sleep, that's not what we're talking about. All, all of these laws, especially this section, we're going to use our discretion, because if we find the same homeless person sleeping on the streets or sleeping in the parking garage, A, we're going to try to figure out where we can direct them. Again, we're not looking to, maybe the guy had too many drinks at Pizza Bene, not picking out any restaurant or anything, but wherever, and he just decides, or she just decides that, you know, "I, I need to probably take a couple hours before I get on Highway fifty and go back to Cameron Park." You know, these are not, this is not black and white, Councilmember Taylor, so we're empathetic, and we're going to ask a lot of questions. We're not going to just go up to a car and go, "You're asleep, it's two thirty in the morning, we're going to write you a ticket." That's, because we of all folks don't want impaired drivers out on the road either, so. If I could just, hopefully that sheds some light on what we're, our thought process is there.
Chief, while you're on that subject, how, what's the frequency of this issue right now?
It comes up periodically. It's, it's not overwhelming. We have a lot more other things that come up at night. I, I don't have that data, so I really don't know, but I don't hear of it a lot. I hear of all the other things that we've discussed more than this.
In the same discretion with the situations like the vice mayor just outlined, are pretty frequent realities of today's tough housing market in being able to-
Right.
-go to the org and find a place to stay. Would the officers have that same global understanding that this is a person-
Yes. Okay. Because I'll emphasize that to them as well, the leadership of the police department. Again, we're, we're not trying to hammer people, we're not trying to pick on anyone. And if someone is trying to get into some transitional housing, we can definitely be empathetic to that.
Like, you know, I, I appreciate what the police department is doing, and, and I, I don't know what other departments are doing, but I feel very confident that you have gone above and beyond to ensure that you are treating people who have the opportunity to find solutions to their homelessness and helping guide them in that direction. And we've had several stories. And maybe some of you here that are here for the first time tonight don't recognize the efforts that our police department are putting in, and in cooperation with the hot team and with the sheriff's department, to, to work with these individuals on a, on a comprehensive approach. And we've actually identified, we have a police officer that, that works specifically on this. And we have limited resources. I mean, we just, we just have limited resources. So, we have made a major commitment, the chief has here, to, to make every effort to assist all those that wish to be not homeless to find those resources, and we have programs for just about every one of them to, to utilize to get that help that they need. So it's not without help, or it's not without effort on our part to find solutions for these, for these people. So, I-
I disagree with the fact that we're, if anybody thinks that we're not making a, a sound and solid effort to do that, I disagree with that. On another note, the Opportunity Knox and Continuum of Care program is right now undergoing a five-year strategic planning, just for people survey, to work on a five-year strategic plan on homelessness and how to deal with it in our community. And it's, and it's a much more comprehensive approach, utilizing all the resources, as well as putting this plan together also makes future funding more readily available for us in terms of grant applications, because that's primarily where all of our money comes from in this community for, for dealing with homeless. You know, we have, we, we've received, I think, two million dollars to date, and, and that money only comes because we're putting programs together like this. And so I do know that the county is working within the guidelines of HUD and the requirements that they need to get the money. And so these things are happening too. There's a lot, this is not just a, you know, just this one program that we're doing to take care of, you know, the camping. There's a lot of different facets to this program that is being done in this community. And this community does care about our homelessness, this, I think this council cares about our homelessness, and I know our police department does, and they treat them with that due respect. And so we are, we are moving forward in many different avenues to, to deal with this, not just this one piece.
So, would you like to make a motion?
No.
No, okay.
I mean, I would like to make a motion, but I'm not sure where to go with it. If somebody has their head wrapped around it, that'd be great.
I thank you for your comments regarding the police department. Let me just ask the chief, will fill us out a little bit more. It's my understanding, a few months ago, that there's at least two of our sergeants, maybe more, that were every week committed to going out with the identified, the current identified homeless population and communicating with them. Is that, is that still taking place, Jim?
No, since we've had Officer Randall assigned to the hot team, we haven't really felt that that was a good use of our resources.
Okay.
So, but what Officer Randall is doing, what Councilmember Thomas has talked about, is making strides. And if I could just emphasize, we're, we're not here to solve the homeless problem for Placerville or El Dorado County. Councilmember Thomas will talk more, I'm sure, at a future date on what the Continuum of Care and Opportunity Knox is doing, but we're trying to make sure that our city, our businesses, our kids, everyone that wants to use open space feels safe in doing so. And I appreciate all of the comments from all of you, reaffirming what I always say about the police department, is we do our job with compassion and caring for these individuals. They are human beings, you've heard me say before, they're not a number. There's other public comments that make all kinds of assumptions. Nonetheless, we have a responsibility to everyone, including that homeless population, to keep them safe from harm as well. Sleeping out in the open is not a safe alternative to having a roof over their head, so. One, one of the things that Officer Randall's been able to do is keep a better track of all of our homeless individuals in the city. As they come and go, the solution, there's a database that we're now plugged into, the services offered to them, where they've gone, did they go to jail, when's the last time we contacted them? And everything's data-driven these days, and we're using all of that data to better serve our community, so.
Chief, is that data available to, to an officer out in the field, two o'clock tomorrow morning, and they pull up on somebody that they think they know?
For the most part, yes.
I mean, at the beginning of their watch, they can, if they need to refresh their memory on-
They can, they can talk to Officer Randall, and, but to be very honest, most of our officers know eighty percent of the individuals in our city.
I bet they do.
They know them by name, when they're running them for their checks on their warrants, they just have to say the name, the dispatcher knows them. They don't need their birthday. We're going to find them in the computer really quick.
Okay. So it says, yes, the situation sounds very similar to what it has been, is that the department serves us twenty-four hours, twenty-four seven, first services for any homeless individual that they contact.
That's correct. We're not a nine-to-five operation, as everybody knows.
Okay, so, I appreciate that. All right, so, we, Mr. Driscoll, were you able to make the clarification in that one paragraph that Councilmember Taylor had some concerns with?
Yes, on sixteen, six nineteen four A one, what we would do is just move the phrase, "Real property within or below a hundred feet above the ordinary high watermark of any lake, waterway, river, stream, pond, or reservoir," to point in the paragraph where it says, "including without limitation," and then that phrase would come right there, and then after that would come streets, sidewalks, parking lots, et cetera. So it makes it clearer in it that it's not a separate rule, a separate rule for those areas.
Okay, I think I saw-
That works for me.
Karen thinks that's, and I appreciate that.
And I think, you know, Ms. Rodman's comments, I think are also appropriate to be included in the ordinance, should you see fit to move in that direction.
And I believe she submitted those in writing to the city clerk.
And I, I have them on here, too.
Oh, very good. We have them up here already. Thank you. So with those two or three changes, would we like to introduce this? Someone like to make a motion to introduce the ordinance?
I'll make that motion, but we, but I don't-
You, so you-
You don't have to.
I can't repeat the whole-
No motion is required. Okay. No motion is required to introduce it. You introduce the ordinance and then move if you so desire to waive the first reading.
Oh, I thought I made a motion to introduce it.
You, you can introduce it without a motion.
Okay.
Come on, John.
That's what I want to do.
But the motion is to waive the first-
To waive the first reading, okay.
Then I'll second it.
She didn't even make the motion. Oh, you did make that.
I'm so tired, I'm going to walk.
Hey, it's not even eight o'clock, Patty, come on. All right, so the, it has been, the, the ordinance has been introduced, and a motion has been made to waive the first reading.
Right.
And it was seconded by Councilmember Thomas, and is there any other comments here at this point? I would just like to thank all the public comments, appreciate the, the wide range of concerns that you've shared, and I think the common goal was safety to the entire community, including the homeless, the ability for all of the public to use the public spaces that we all expect to use, whether it's a street or sidewalk or a park. And that goes for a homeless person as well as a regular resident or a business owner. Appreciate the recognition that this is a very small slice of this issue. This is no attempt to solve sadly a huge number of remaining issues, but I appreciate the comment that this appears to be a, a good first step, and we will bring it back in, let's see, we have a meeting in December for the second reading, and then that would be for adoption. Usually there aren't any changes made, though, we will take public testimony, however. And so I would thank staff at the chief for your hard work in this, and all of your officers and the dedication that they continue to show throughout the keeping the community safe. And, you know, we've heard so much about the Boise case ever since it happened, and it has been-
It is being appealed. A number of cities have filed and joined in the action, appealing it. I think Sacramento is one of those cities, of course, the city of Boise is, and there's a number of others that have joined in that. So, it's, it, given the flavor of the Supreme Court, we could get a different decision.
Well, the thing is, is this new ordinance will be in compliance with-
We hope it is.
Well, we know our existing ordinance is not. So, we're doing our very best. I think it's a smart step forward.
It's going in the right direction.
Yes, it is. So with that, I'll ask the clerk to call it all.
Mayor Rukuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Thank you all very much for coming this evening, and thank you all for your input. All right, Mr. Morris?
Can I make a couple of comments based on that?
Sure.
One I wanted to note, just the, the comment about the armory building, I want to let you know, the staff, Mr. Rivas and myself have met, actually with a couple of companies now that are interested in that being considered for permanent housing, affordable housing. So we are pursuing that and looking at what might happen to, need to happen to make that work, so just for your information.
I'm wondering what percentage of the homeless who are considered low-income but would be able to go into that type of housing?
Well, a lot of, a lot of questions. I don't, I don't think we do have, no.
But I did hear, I mean, that is a point of-
Yeah.
-that along the way, where they're, where they're being rehabbed, and, you know, that if we had very low-income housing, or low, I can't remember the, but that would be a solution to some of the homeless that are there.
Some of it, yeah, yeah.
Let me just, I think on the higher level, it's important for the community to know that it's not being considered, the armory is not being considered for transitional housing or a homeless facility.
Correct. It's our understanding in the, what the governor did, that it would not be eligible to be used for transitional or shelter.
And that was in a clear executive order that he issued earlier this- And that was in a clear executive order that he issued earlier this year.
Correct.
We've, we've had no indication that, to the, to the contrary to that.
The second I've just quickly mentioned, and maybe if any of the council wants to say yes or no to this, I was contacted actually just today by Daniel Del Monte and asked if I would serve on the committee that they're setting up to, to put together the strategic plan that they're doing. And their first meeting is in early December that they're putting together, so.
Did you say yes?
Yeah, I think we would want you to say yes. In your fair time, of course.
Okay, I, I did, but I just wanted to make sure the council was good with that, so.
And that's, that's good news to hear, because that's the kind of partnership that maybe wasn't, that didn't exist in the past, and it's great to hear that they're reaching out. And we're continuing to build a city-county team that also leads to continued state funding and opportunities to make a significant difference. This funding is out there, but we do have to have the pieces in place here locally. So, thank you, Cleve. Thank you for volunteering to serve on this.
One more job.
All right. Would the council like to take a break, or shall we move forward to item 12.1?
How much longer we have?
Well...
President, while he talks about PG&E.
I'm not gonna talk about PG&E, I promise. We're getting to big, bigger. We've got quite a bit of stuff to go through. I'm gonna suggest we take a five-minute break. We'll come back at 8:05.
Eat a cookie.
I think I'd like to jump ahead to 12.2, regarding the agreement with the Arts and Culture, Arts and Culture El Dorado. We'll get back to PG&E in a few minutes, and maybe also consider doing 12.3 also. After we get to 12.5, oh, no.
They don't want to hear about PG&E.
And I don't know anybody's out here worried about the, well, anyway. All right. Is the council...
That's fine with me.
I'm in agreement.
Thank you very much. So, then we'll go ahead and hear 12.2, adopt a resolution approving an agreement with the Arts and Culture El Dorado for maintenance of the Public Health mural project. Mr. Rivas, I believe you have the staff report this evening.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Just a quick recap, because it's been some time since this item was before you. The council adopted Resolution 8655 on August the 14th, 2018, and what that resolution did was basically support the transportation mural project, and also then support the content of the proposed transportation artwork, the mural itself. So, that's a requirement of submitting the application to Caltrans. The project was originally, was gonna be, or the application was gonna be made by El Dorado County directly to Caltrans, and then the county was gonna enter into a, both a maintenance agreement with Caltrans to permanently maintain the life of the mural, and then also enter into a maintenance agreement with Arts and Culture El Dorado, which is actually the party that would oversee the appropriate maintenance of that mural for its 20-year proposed lifespan. Subsequent to the county's submittal of the application to Caltrans, the county was notified that due to a maintenance agreement that the city has with Caltrans that was entered into in 1955, that that precludes then the county's being the LPA, the local public agency, to submit the application for transportation art. And so, now it rests with the city. So, that's why this item is before you. The city does wish to facilitate the mural project as it was formally supported by the council. So, what's before you then is a draft of the maintenance agreement that the city would enter into with the Arts and Culture El Dorado, and also direct staff to then be the applicant, the LPA, and submit the application directly to Caltrans. And so, staff proposes to do that. Part of that application would then, we would enter into an agreement with Caltrans for the ultimate responsibility to ensure maintenance of that mural. But in this case, we would then enter into the agreement that's proposed with the Arts and Culture El Dorado. So, with that, staff is recommending that the council adopt a resolution approving the agreement with the Arts and Culture El Dorado for the maintenance of the Public Health mural project. It's called the Transportation Art, proposed by the County of El Dorado Health and Human Services Agency, and authorizing the mayor, the city manager, the director of development services, and city clerk to execute the same, and authorize staff to submit a transportation art application to Caltrans for the painting of a mural, which would be located on the east pier wall, located at the underpass at US Highway 50 and Mosquito Road. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions the council has at this time. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Pierre, appreciate that. Does the council have any questions for Mr. Rivas?
What is the foundation of the 20 years on this?
That's the estimated time that the mural would be able to, that would last. And so, if you recall, we went through extensive discussions on how that mural would be applied to that pier wall, and the coating that would be applied to the artwork once it's completed by the artist. And so, if you look at some of the, some of the responsibilities of the Arts and Culture, they would be able to, or they will be required to review it, I think, on a weekly or bi-weekly basis to determine whether or not there's any graffiti, any necessary maintenance to be done to the mural, and then they have the responsibility, responsibility to do that. I do want to add that the mural is being funded by the County of El Dorado, and that is why there will be a maintenance agreement also between the county and Arts and Culture El Dorado as a funding agency for the project.
Thank you, Pierre. Any other questions? All right, I'm gonna go ahead and open up the public comment, and I would like to ask if there's anybody from El Dorado Arts and Council would like to, Arts and Culture to comment on the item? It's been over a year, nobody wants to comment, all right? Any member of the public wishing to comment on item 12.2, the creation of an agreement with Caltrans to maintain the mural as was previously discussed? Seeing nobody approaching, Mr. Smith, a late riser. Pull the microphone up for us, please.
It's a great monument to tenacity. It failed to get a second the first two times, and finally, it was a tribute to a great political acumen and the wise pressure to bring up. So, at this stage, it'd be unwise to think that there's any chance to have big changes. But when you're talking about putting some, an agreement with the county, is that before us? Have we seen what it is? This is over 20 years. Now, let's assume this magic paint, I've heard the stories about it, will work for 20 years and won't peel, chip, et cetera, or be deteriorated by all kinds of exhaust through that underpass. What's the enforcement mechanism? They're gonna be responsible for it, but is there any bond or insurance policy they have to come up with? How many of us are gonna be around in 20 years or 10 years? I mean, you folks will be off the council, maybe, by that time. And so, who's gonna come back and, and seek to follow up? So, there should be some kind of method...
Tarot over here.
Yeah, very young folks up here. But there, there should be some mechanism for enforcement, just like a standard business-like procedure. I don't see that. So, I'm not gonna bring up other things like some of the rules of Caltrans regarding these things, and where they can be put, and so on, because I just don't think that's gonna go for first. But I'd feel a lot more comfortable if you had something in there that showed that there was really more than just faith, faith that this painting lasts for 20 years, faith that somebody will do, come by there every week, et cetera, and, and check, and then make maintenance when it's needed. What enforcement mechanism do you have? Posting bond, paying insurance? I don't know. Is the county gonna be stuck with the bill? I'm glad to know they're involved, but it's in the city. Are they gonna come in and pay for it? I haven't seen the agreement with them. So, those are the kind of things I think you should look at, assuming you want it, and that's clearly you do, we heard the vote last time, but those kind of things should be wrapped up to make sure that the public interest for the people of this community that pay taxes is covered, because the cost of all those repairs goes way up beyond the cost of inflation, and in 10, 20 years, that's a lot of money. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Another member of the public wish to comment on 12.2?
Good evening, council. Jackie Now, I will be here in 10 or 20 years. If there is such a tragic problem, I will go out with my graffiti gray paint, and I will put it back the way it is. It's not really that big of a deal. Let's, let's get some positive stuff going, let's get some bright colors, and I'm excited. Bye.
Thank you very much. Is there another member of the public wishing to address the council on this item? Seeing no one else approaching the podium, I'll close public comment, bring it back to the council for discussion. It's a fair enough question, Cleve, do you feel that we have the necessary enforcement tools, or maybe Mr. Driscoll, that if there are any of these issues were to come up, that the appropriate agency, other than the city, would be responsible, and future councils and city managers would have the ability to clearly contact the responsible party?
Well, I, I think it is in there that clearly states whose responsibility it will be. It'll be the Arts Council responsibility. You know, I thought about that, what if, Terry won't like me saying this, but what if the Arts Council folds for some reason, is no longer there?
Oh, yes.
Sorry, Terry. What, what happened?
But that's a legitimate question.
It is, it is, and I think with anything, though, you talk about, you know, you know, relationships you may have with different organizations and how you work with them, and I will admit that, you know, there, there is some risk there, that something could happen, and, you know, we, we have to consider that. With any project that you do, there is risk, and you weigh that risk and determine whether or not it's something that's worth moving forward. Worst-case scenario, it doesn't get done, and we call Jackie Now, or we, we send our public works department out there and say, we need to paint over that, and we paint our graffiti gray over, over the wall, and, and it's done. I don't think there's a huge amount of cost that we'd be talking about involved with doing that, so.
Does the, there's nothing to preclude the council, or, yeah, future council, from saying, we've enjoyed this mural for 10 years, and we would like to move on?
I'm gonna look at the, I, I think that, is that, yes?
It can be terminated on seven-day notice, the agreement. And if it's terminated, then the mural can be removed. All right, I didn't get into that level of detail.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the, I mean, we have, there's an indemnity clause in there from the grantee, as well as a $1 million insurance policy, so I think from a fiscal standpoint, we're covered from, and then there is the indemnification in there as well, so.
And there is a removal plan?
Yeah.
Yeah, staff would only comment that the artwork, once completed, becomes the property of the state of California, so I'm sure they would have a say-so in it. We're just responsible for maintaining it on behalf of the state.
Well, I would just like to remind everyone about a, a train engine that we lost. That agreement, and we had agreements.
Yeah, we had, and we still, they still exist, actually.
And we never got our train back. They gave us this box car that's down there in place of...
It's a caboose. It's a little better than a box car.
Caboose. I don't care. Anyway, it's not the engine that was, you know, and all those promises were made, and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, and...
They were supposed to be 20 or 40 free tickets every year to the youth fund for train rides and Sacramento tour.
So, I, I agree. I think Mr. Smith has a good point in, you know, what do we have to seal this, you know?
I have a question for Mr. Rivas, if I might ask, is that okay?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you. Pierre, how long do you think it'll take Caltrans to process this agreement? Couple of years?
No, I think, and, and staff has been in contact with, with Caltrans, you know, yesterday and, and today on various issues, but they've already, were in receipt of the application by the county, and, and it was just that one old agreement that sort of caused us to be in this particular situation. That's a 1955 maintenance agreement, so I don't think it'll take them that long. It's gonna be an identical application, just the difference would be the LPA instead of being El Dorado County, it's the city of Placerville.
Okay. So, you're ready to go once the, once the action takes place this evening?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Cleve has great connections to Caltrans, too, and this by one of the signals, so. All right, if there's no other discussion, would somebody like to make a motion regarding these, this, this maintenance agreement with Caltrans regarding the mural? Don't all rush forward to your microphones.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution.
It's been moved, is there a second? There's no seconds, some motion dies for the lack of a second. Further discussion? Let's see now, I'm trying to remember back to last year when we had this same issue come up. Would someone like to make another motion? A motion to, is there a motion to, to not enter into this agreement with Caltrans for the mural?
Is the issue because of what we've talked about, that there's no, that, that we don't have any real concrete, other than their word? That we don't, do we need to insist on something a little bit more concrete? I don't know if that's the issue or not.
That's a good question. Is that the concern of the council, that there's some liability here that this future city staff and council will be facing? Not getting any response. All right.
I, I think that this, you know, there's, there's a couple of issues for me. It doesn't square with what the, with what our attorney said in terms of our, you know, seven-day out with who owns it, and how that can be dealt with, the out clause. I wasn't, I wasn't here when this was voted on, so I'm kind of in this weird place here when it was originally in 2018 voted on. That's all I have to say right now.
Okay. Mr. Driscoll, a point of order. If there is no motion, what becomes the status of the project?
Effectively dies unless we come back.
Microphone, please.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
It effectively dies.
All right. Thank you. So, what's the wish of my colleagues here? Does it, no, I'm gonna be quiet. Michael, you were here, right?
No. I was not, no.
Kara, you weren't here.
I was not here.
I was here, and you were here.
You were here. All right, very good.
And if you remember, I had, I really kind of had an objection to the whole thing, but I did vote for it. However, I wasn't in favor of putting it under the underpass, so I'm still not sure it's gonna work. I hope it does, but that was a problem with me. I think it's a lot of work and effort that I'm not sure is gonna tell the story, what they're trying to tell, so that was mine.
All right, well, I will ask again, is there, is there a motion? We had a motion, would there be a second? No, I should ask for a new motion on, Mr. Driscoll. Is there a motion to approve the contract with Caltrans? Is there a motion to deny the contract with Caltrans?
Is it approving the contract with Caltrans, or approving the contract with Arts and Culture El Dorado for maintenance?
This is...
It's Caltrans.
Basically, Caltrans.
It's Arts and Culture.
And, yeah, it's the whole thing. Yeah, it's the entire, without, without this, you can't do anything else, and then Caltrans owns it.
So, I'm, I'm just kind of confused what the underlying issue is. I feel like everyone's being real quiet, and I think that the public deserves to know what the underlying, I mean, what, why are you guys being so quiet about this? What's your issue?
Good question.
Go ahead, Mr. Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor, Chair Gosa.
Well, I'm not sure, but I didn't realize it was a 20-year agreement that we had on this. I thought it would have been something that was more, I don't know, cyclical, or had more, I didn't realize it was that long-term of a project. I mean, quite frankly, it's not my favorite mural in the world, and so, it's just not my, my favorite project, I guess.
We went through that. That was discussed.
Okay, thank you for that, appreciate it.
What if we changed the timeline? Does it have to be 20 years?
I don't think we can do that, Cleve, Mr. Driscoll, because it's an agreement with Caltrans.
Well, the agreement...
Well, the agreement is really between Arts and Culture and the city.
Okay.
So, I mean, you can change the term. And if Caltrans will sign off on it, I don't know what their requirements are for a term of this type. But it would seem to me that if you can terminate the agreement on seven days' notice, you certainly can have a shorter period than twenty years.
But you have to realize, if you terminate the agreement with Arts and Culture El Dorado, then it becomes your responsibility to maintain that. Caltrans still owns the mural. And Caltrans comes to us and say, "Okay, you know, you need to take care of that."
You need to take care of that.
So why you would want to terminate the agreement with Arts and Culture El Dorado, I'm not sure why we would ever recommend that we do that.
And you've already approved, the previous council already approved moving forward with this?
Correct. We referred to the, Pierre referred to the resolution that adopted and approved the mural project back in-
There were huge discussions on the-
There was.
It's alive, 2018.
Can I make a comment?
Certainly.
You know, generally, I'm a fan of murals and a fan of public art. And regardless of what you think about this specific mural, you know, as a community member, I don't feel entitled to personally love the aesthetics of every single piece of community art. What's more important to me is that we live in a community where local artists are working with kids from the Boys and Girls Club to develop these concepts, provide a positive message to the community, and to, you know, live in a place where people can leave their stamp on it, because that's empowering. So it's less to me about what, you know, the actual aesthetics of the piece and more about the community behind it and the process that went into it and all the different groups that came together to make this happen so far.
And I think that's why it was okayed. I mean, that was the, you know, the general consensus.
If staff could just provide a few comments. Under the, it's on page five of twelve of the draft agreement under term. It basically says, "This agreement shall become effective upon final execution of both parties and shall continue in effect for twenty years or until the removal of the transportation art has been completed." So that's just a ceiling. Typically, murals that are created by an artist, and in this case, we do have a local artist that is gonna do the mural, that it's expected to have, you know, a fairly long lifespan, as murals do in any city. And I would also add then to, on page three towards the top, that's the whole section regarding the maintenance, repair, and restoration and removal of the transportation art. Spells out exactly the responsibilities of the Arts and Culture El Dorado, because it would be the city's responsibility to do all of this maintenance work. And instead, we're just taking it over from what was gonna be El Dorado County's responsibility. And they were then gonna enter into an agreement with Arts and Culture El Dorado to perform the task of maintaining the mural. So there is no bond, but however, if you look at Section 2D, it does state, "If during the term of this agreement, the grantee shall cease to maintain transportation art to satisfaction of city or the county," the grantee being Arts and Culture El Dorado, "as provided by this agreement, city or the county may either undertake to perform the maintenance on behalf of grantee at grantee's expense, or direct grantee to remove or itself remove the transportation art at grantee's sole expense and restore the state's right-of-way to its prior condition." So, again, I don't think it's incredibly expensive to remove the mural, should it be heavily damaged for some reason. But I think that's, should be plenty insurance that it would be done by either the city or the county. And again, I want to emphasize, it's the County of El Dorado that's funding the project, and so it behooves them to make sure that the mural maintains its life as expected, since they're spending the money for the mural in the first place. And then if you look at section, under Section B, responsibilities of grantee, it really specifies the installation of the artwork in great detail and what needs to be done. And then under Section B two, the maintenance plan, the grantee shall perform maintenance duties that include, and actually, it describes in detail the amount of work, the cleanings required, the restoration work if that's required, to maintain the mural in an appropriate state, both to the satisfaction of the Caltrans, the city, and the county.
Mayor, if I could comment on one more, I told you incorrectly. Under the termination of the agreement, it states that in the event of such termination, which requires seven days' notice, and this could be seven days after it's completed. It says, "Once it's completed, you get to go." If it is terminated with that seven days' notice, "In the event of such termination, city or county may take such actions may appear to yet appropriate under the circumstances and including, without limitation of the generality of the foregoing, commissioning another party to complete or remove the work." So if it is terminated, that tells me that we would have the ability to remove the work at any time, so.
So it's not the state's property, then?
Apparently not, the way I read this, the way you interpret that, John.
Well, what it's painted on is the state's property, but I really don't think Caltrans would care, to be honest with you, if it goes back to its natural, or original state, let me put it that way. They're not, they're not gonna object if you wanna paint it over, as long as you don't paint it the color that's...
I personally think that twenty years is a long time to look at this mural and to, and then while I agree with you and a lot of people have put a lot of time into this, I think that is, you know, to have a mural like this, and my wife has told me that anytime you produce a piece of art and put it out there and ask people's opinion, half the people will like it and half the people won't. And you can almost set your watch by that. So it is, I'm, personally, I am not a big fan of this particular art. I've seen a lot of amazing art, and there's a lot of it going on around the country. And I would be open to a five-year instead of a twenty-year, or something, a shorter time span. That twenty years is a long time. And while, oop, that's just where I'm at.
First of all, thank you to Pierre and John and Cleve for your reviewing of the various portions of the legalities of what is being considered. Memory is coming back from last year when this came forward, and interestingly, Dennis has commented, right, because it was about equally loved and hated when it was presented. There was some concern, and I think one of the things that made it very difficult was the fact that the funding came through with the idea that the mural concept was going to be health-related. And it's in a very transportation-heavy-focused corridor, where most people would expect to see something related to, you know, for example, the railroad used to go underneath one part of that, or the fruit shed was there for however many hundred years. Something related to Placerville, so on and so forth. There was a lot of time spent trying to segue into how these panels that were eventually adopted were gonna make sense to the average person that was coming and going. I also recall that the city got involved way late, and that the Boys and Girls Club and all that took place before we had any idea that this site was being considered, or that there was going to be this healthy living theme for the mural. And there was some recognition made last year that that was a mistake and that the city and the community should have been involved very early on, because we would still get the same fifty-fifty love and hate, but everybody would have known from day one what was gonna be coming. So it was quite a trying process last year, and this room was filled. It's a good thing the chief was here. Twenty years is a long time to look at these panels, and I do have to agree with that. That is, thinking about the popularity of some of the mural projects in Sacramento that they have been so proud of in the last couple of three years, they changed those out. They leave them up for a year, they leave them up for six months. There's certainly nothing down there that's even close to five years on some of these big buildings. And that's part of the appeal of what they're doing, is to having those big building facades available for different artists and themes and community concepts.
Kind of like what Pierre was talking about.
So here we are now, a year later, and the room is practically empty, other than for very few involved folks, and the future of this project is hanging. Bad pun. Since this was a, kind of an unexpected twist in this, and we have reviewed quite a bit of legal information, I'm thinking, would it be appropriate to open a public comment for any member of the public that may wish to? Point of order, Mr. Driscoll?
Do you have the discretion to reopen public comment if you desire? And a lot of new information's come up in this discussion.
Yeah, it's kind of where I was thinking, John. All right. So, given that the council is kind of at a standstill here, and most of the council wasn't here when this came up last year, I am gonna go ahead and open a public comment again on this item, and ask, folks have heard where this is at, and is there any member of the public that would like to address the council? We would welcome your input. I will ask you to restate your name, though, so.
Jackie Now.
Thank you.
Very disappointed in this conversation. A lot of time and work goes into something like this, and maybe you like it, maybe you don't. What, the decision that you're making is basically just reversing the previous council's decision. It's not based on the agenda item, really. What I'm hearing is, "Oh, I don't like it. I voted for it before, but now I'm not going to vote for it." That is so incredibly disrespectful to all of the time and work that has gone into bringing this forward. If you were going to squash it, you should have squashed it back then and not let people put so much time and effort into this. That's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Is there any other member of the public wish to address the council?
Hi, good evening. Kristen Becker. I was a big part of the project. I would love to see it happen, and I don't, I don't know, I'm kind of representing Health and Human Services with the county. So I'm gonna be speaking on their behalf, just because they're not here, and I feel like this is important enough. And I don't know if Arts and Culture, we haven't had a chance to talk, but if you feel really uncomfortable with the twenty years, I had filled out the original application. I believe it is up to the applicant. It was up to, like Pierre said, a ceiling of twenty years. So the applicant could, I would have to relook at the application, but I believe you could put any span of time. So if council felt more comfortable with five years, and if that was the only thing that was prohibiting this project from moving forward, I, representing the county, would be fine with the five years. So, thank you.
Thank you for that. That is very helpful. Good evening again.
Kirk Smith. Mayor, I think that you did a good job in summarizing the past history, and I would offer a separate view from what you've heard to suggest that all of you are to be commended when you exercise independent judgment. All of you were not here last year, so it's difficult to admonish you for doing something different than was done last year, because you weren't here. And it is a fair example, statement to say, when it comes to art, you'll find some people on one side and some people on the other. But actually, you can find, I think, a bigger consensus on a lot of things, like keeping the train instead of giving us a caboose. And your suggestion about a mural that has to do with something that's more thematically consistent with the area, transportation, and where geographically it's located, something of a train, that locomotive instead of just a caboose, on that would work. So as far as all this energy that's put in it, well, a lot of energy goes into things, but it should be something that people can get behind. And what can be done is, you can have public funding. If you can't, if the grant requires you to do these themes, you can have people donate. We had, how much money was put into putting that piece of art over at the sheriff's new digs? It was huge. So I think this community would rally around, you know, a cause they can largely get behind. And on one of the Facebook pages, which has, you know, thousands of members, it wasn't fifty-fifty. People wanted respect for the historic character of town. And they're the kind of people who you won't always see here, because they're, you know, working long hours and they're watching ballgames and that kind of stuff. But there was a large view that they wanted things that were historically significant and related to the history of this town, and saw the design, both of the designs, as kind of reminiscent of what they'd see going through Rancho Cordova or through Sacramento. So just because there's been a lot of effort, doesn't mean you can't put some more effort and, you know, go out there and solicit funds, so that you can come up with another proposal that the public would be more likely to get behind. Because I think, again, you get a good summary of what it was, and although this room was packed, you have to look at, there was certain specific groups that were on one side and a scattering of the other. But I think that there was no scientific sampling, but what you saw on that one page was a tremendous amount of strength for the idea that they wanted it historically significant. So I commend you for your independent judgment. Do what you think is in the best interest of the community, and we'll preserve our assets, which includes having to tear it apart if we necessarily do in five years or twenty years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. And another member of the public?
Andrew Von Dusman, Arts and Culture. One point of clarification is that upon approval by Caltrans, they will own the intellectual property, they do not own the paint. It is up to us, if this agreement is entered into, to maintain or remove it. As Mr. Driscoll said, if you back out of this agreement, it would be up to us to remove it then. Secondly, I am in favor of doing it at a five-year point rather than twenty years. Part of public art is to spur more public art. If we were to put this mural up and it were there for five years, that gives the community five years to raise the money, do the outreach, create a design, hire an artist, and be prepared to install another mural in that, in that location, which, by the way, could use some color. So I am all in favor, if Kristen is speaking for the county, that we do cut down the amount of time that we are expecting the ceiling to be on the mural being there. But once again, the state would own the intellectual property, not the paint that we applied. That would be ours, and up to us to maintain or remove. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification, Andrew. Appreciate that. Is there another member of the public that wishes to comment?
Sue Rodman, Placerville resident. I think I agree with Kara. Just because some of us don't like this particular mural, or do like this particular mural, it was already sent back once to make it more historically correct. And the one that came forward, I thought was a great improvement. And I think changing the timeframe so that it's not twenty years, but five or ten years, maybe five years in this era of changing things, would be a good timeframe to use. But this has already been hashed through once. And one of the things that has always driven me crazy with any bureaucracy is when they go back and remake decisions, and remake decisions, and remake decisions. We made the decision last year to go ahead with the mural as it was redesigned, and all we're talking about now is who's gonna maintain or remove it. So I really don't see the big deal. I think we can change the timeframe, but I think we've already gone through all the pain of going through this and over and over, and having the artist actually bring in the first thing and his redesign. And I think not every, not every piece of public art in Placerville has to be about his history. We can have something a little different, can't we? I would say we go ahead. Change the timeframe and go ahead. We already made this decision. Let's keep it. Let's keep with it.
Thank you, Sue. Appreciate your comments. Is there another member of the public wishing to address the council? Item 12.3...
Hi there. My name's John Clarici. I'm a resident of Placerville. I was here, and I remember the discussions, and they were quite robust. I agree with Councilmember Taylor. Once again, if you try to get agreement on this, you'll never will. You could decide not to do this, and you know what you're going to end up with? You're never going to end up with a railroad. You're never going to end up with a train. You're not going to end up to an ode to whatever odes we want to have. You're going to end up with a big gray wall. Why? Because there's a group of people that never like what anybody else is doing, but when you ask them to do something on their own, they can't get it done. And that's what's happened. There are plenty of blank spaces in this town where anybody could build a mural about anything they want, and they could go raise money, and you know what? There's still blank spaces, because the people that don't like this particular thing... And I am not an art critic. I don't... When I was up there, I was kind of eh about the whole thing, but the reality is, if you don't do this, there will be a gray blank wall. Now, you have a decision to make. Do you like that? Or do you like even some art you don't particularly care for? The reality is this. The fruit shed burned down in 1974, I believe. The railroad hasn't gone through there in about 30 years, maybe 20. Healthcare is the number-one industry in this town right now. The grant wasn't for railroads and fruit sheds or anything else. It was for a thing about healthcare. It came from the health department. You have a decision to make. You either want something there, or you want a big gray wall, unless one of you is going to pick up a brush and make a mural, because that's the only way it's going to get done. And we're going to talk about something here real soon, and that's the lights on Main Street, and it kind of follows the same freaking pattern. So, I am in favor of getting this done. I think the five-year thing is fine. It'll be longer than that. How long has Snowshoes Thompson been on the side of that place on Sacramento Street? Hangtown's been there forever. You don't have any maintenance agreements with them. No one's sitting there and agonizing over, well, are they ever going to come back and repaint Snowshoes Thompson? No, we're not asking that question. This thing will be fine. I think you should do it. It would be nice to see something there. And if you don't like it, then you can cover it up with gray paint and make it look like concrete all over again. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Clarici. Any other member of the public wishing to address the council on this item? Seeing no one else, thank you all for your second round of comments. We appreciate that. Thought comes to my mind that, Andrew, you actually... It's kind of scary, because we were thinking exactly alike there just a few minutes ago. Having sat through this process on a number of different kinds of projects, they don't have to all be murals to have the same sort of community reactions. And I did leave out one piece of history, and Sue brought it up. These panels that we have here this evening are not what was originally submitted. These are the panels that were revised to make them look more Hangtown-ish. And so...
Historic.
Historic Hangtown-ish. So, the artists, the community, the artists' community themselves did listen, came back. There were another room full of folks, and we were equally split on whether or not it would work. We understood where the funding came from, and there wasn't a big blank wall up at Marshall Hospital that anybody was anxious to go paint on. So, we're left with this site. Looking at the way murals are being handled today, as I mentioned Sacramento, there's a lot of competition to get involved in those spaces.
Tall buildings.
What Andrew described is exactly what could happen. Let those folks go ahead and move forward with this, with a five-year timeframe. Bring it back for public review in five years, and if there is a significant amount of concern from the public, they will have done exactly as Andrew described. They will have said, oh, my God, we can't have that up there. It'll take them three or four years to get a committee together to raise the funds, to come up with some conceptions, to bring it to the city council, and then the community at large can address that. That city council and city manager can address that. That will be the public input that should take place with public art.
Okay, I would like to say something.
So, with that, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the agreement at five years, as outlined with the panels that have been submitted after the two review processes that took place in 2018.
I would like you to amend your motion. I'd request you amend your motion to sunset in five years.
No, I would bring it back for public review in five years.
I would second that.
So, we have a motion and a second further discussion. And Mr. Chair?
Yeah, I think it's a good compromise. I do think that for all of us that weren't sitting here in 2018, this is a good opportunity for us to have some say in this project. I don't think our votes here are pro forma, because a past council did something. I think that's why we're here, to make decisions. And so, I like the idea of a five-year. I can get behind that, and then look forward to the vote.
All right. Thank you very much. Dennis?
My wife and I disagreed on this back in the... Back when she was on city council and working on this.
Probably sitting here.
Maybe. And she was, actually. And that's okay, because that's part of the whole art part. I want to also honor all the work that has gone into this. My objection for 20 years is how, you know, I just have a real challenge with that piece of art for 20 years. I think that it's a long time for any kind of art like that to be on display. But at the same time, I also want to honor the work that the council put in, that the artists put in to bring this back around in full circle, and I would... So, I appreciate the motion for five years on that.
And I also, I would like to say something. There was kind of an insinuation that I said, I voted for it before, and I'm not going to vote for it again. That was not my intent. My intent was, I just was being very truthful to say that this was not my favorite project, and it wasn't the murals itself. The murals... There was a beautiful story that came... That went along with this, and I did not feel that, in that particular area, with traffic whizzing by, it was going to tell that story, that people were going to be able to absorb that. So, I just want to explain where I was coming from. I, too, think that we should maybe sunset it at five years, and then... Or, I don't care, but it just... I just want to bring my point of view. I think that having this many murals on under the freeway, as I said before, with the traffic whizzing by, that it's not going to tell the whole story. I was told that there's a lot of people that walk up there, and it will be appreciated, and it will be seen. So, we'll see. I, you know, I have that, and that was what was behind my decision at the time.
So, would my intent on the motion, so that it would be back before the council for review, to see if it wanted to be changed, or extended for another five years? So there would be time for, you know, public notice. Obviously, Arts and Culture is going to know what's going on. Caltrans will know what's going on.
I think public review would be the wisest, because we may... People may learn to love it.
Yep, it may be a non-issue.
And there may be no other group vying for the job to do a mural. So, I mean, what harm is it in bringing it back? And instead of just determining...
There may be a group that comes in with a fantastic idea that we can't even imagine right now, with the funding and what have you.
Leaves your options open.
Yeah.
I have no objection.
Right. Well, if there's no other discussion, I'll go ahead and call... I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Mayor, if staff can just make another comment. What we recommend is that you direct staff to modify the draft agreement, to modify the 20 years to five years. Staff would also request that you direct staff to include a provision that the Arts and Council, or the county, bring this item back to the council for a review at that five-year period, because staff is... I don't know if staff's going to remember or something like that, but we want to put that responsibility on the party that has the responsibility to maintain the mural.
All right. That seems reasonable. Mr. Driscoll, your thoughts on Mr. Rivas's...
I think it's fine. I mean, what he's suggesting is very appropriate, and...
Do we need to bring it back, or can we make the decision this evening?
I'm sorry.
Do we need to bring it back? Or can we just direct staff to make those changes?
You can direct staff to make those changes.
So then, that would be included in my motion, as outlined by Mr. Rivas. Make sure that all the necessary agreements are modified to reflect responsibilities with the entities involved. All right. With that, thank you, Mr. Rivas. Those important little details, that we do want to make sure that this thing is given a fair opportunity. Would you want to amend your second?
Do I need to?
Yeah, sure. Yes, you actually, you do.
Okay, this is new for me. So I would second the motion with the amendment that...
As amended.
Okay, as amended, yeah.
Thank you very much. All right. So it's been moved and seconded. Now I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Mayor Kuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much for your hard work and commitment to this. There should be no delay in getting that revision done in that paperwork, so we move forward. Now we'll move on to item 12.3, which is to adopt, authorize, a city engineer to negotiate an agreement with Light It Up, the amount of $15,325 to install decorative lights on the Christmas tree located at the corner of Bedford and Main, and also decorative lamp post lighting from Main Street... Along Main Street from Bedford to Sacramento Street. And I believe our esteemed city engineer, Rebecca Neves, has a report. Good morning.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. For many years, the city has sponsored the Festival of Lights, and specifically the Christmas tree lighting. Through the generosity of Western Signs and Dave Brazelton, the lights were installed and removed annually. The city thanks Western Sign and Dave for the many years of their support and dedicated donations for this cherished community event. In the past year, Western Signs changed owners, and due to unfortunate timing, we were not able... They're not able to assist the city with addressing the Christmas lights this year, which are in need of replacement. However, they've generously donated the star on the Christmas tree. As this became known, another set of supporters for the event have come forward and committed to the efforts to make this year's Festival of Lights one to remember. In addition to the Christmas tree lighting, this year's season will also allow our community to enjoy lighting across Main Street, hayrides, Christmas music while people shop, and in conjunction with 12 local churches, the Festival of Lights will allow our community to enjoy entertainment, refreshments, and together, these enhancements are taking this event to another level. Through the event supporters, the city obtained a bid from Light It Up for both the tree lights and the Main Street lights, using existing infrastructure, the lamp posts on Main Street. Post extensions were fabricated, with the prototype being installed on November 3rd, verifying that the minimum vertical clearance of 14 feet has been met. Tonight's item approves the contracted effort to move forward with the lighting. This has taken a lot of loving hearts, prayers, and helping hands to pull together, and there are lists of thank yous I had to write out, because there was quite a few. The biggest thank you I've seen actually should go to Veer Camp, and specifically Matt Veer Camp. You know, he's an apple that didn't fall far from his family tree, and that they're just generous supporters and love this community that they live and work in. Matt himself has been seen a few times under the cover of darkness in a bucket elevated above Main Street, and trying on different post extensions to make sure that what we're proposing works, and there was no small effort on his part. I also want to give a huge shout-out to the Placerville Downtown Association. Andrew Von Derschman is in the audience this evening. Thank you. They approved, passing through a grant to the city, an amount of $7,000 to fund this effort. Also want to thank Matt Barber with AirTech, donated $2,500. He was here for quite a while and had to leave, but he handed over the check for that effort this evening, and very much appreciate their help. As well as CNH Auto Mountain Enterprises through Marcos Gomez, who donated $5,000 and notified us last week of that donation, and the check is coming in in the morning. As well as Clarici Consultant. Big thank you to John Clarici, and a couple other anonymous donations. There's been a lot of people involved on this. I mentioned Matt, but there's also, you know, our own Terry Zeller and Nick Stone. You guys have been very supportive through everything, and I just really appreciate all your help. Councilmember Thomas, and John Clarici, as well as Cleve and Dave. It was very clear in the efforts and planning this event how many people love our community, and it was just very heartwarming to participate and observe this. We're really all blessed. So the item before you this evening would allow us to move forward with the contracted efforts to do those lighting... To do the lighting on Main Street, and to replace the Christmas tree lighting. The proposed Christmas tree lighting has a service life of about four to five years, so it's a good investment, and we're looking forward to this year's event, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, Rebecca. Did the council have any questions for our city engineer?
I have one clarification. The $7,000 donation from PDA is actually split into two parts. One is a $5,000 donation that's passed through as a grant for decorations downtown, and then the downtown merchants over the last four years have been putting... A number of merchants have been putting $25 a year into a fund that was a drip... A fund to... For this purpose. And so, it's been split a couple of different ways, but I do know that downtown merchants have been putting money aside for this very purpose as well, so I just wanted to call them out as well.
Thank you. That was a good clarification. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Questions for our city engineer? Item one. Rebecca, do you... You are... Nick might know. How often was Western Sign having to replace the lights on their tree?
Actually, I might defer this one to Terry.
Since I've got vast experience with this.
Yeah, I was just going to...
He wasn't even here.
We could call Steve. You all, but...
Well, from what I understand, it was a yearly effort, and it was Western Sign providing traffic control, the bucket trucks, and the personnel, and then our staff providing some road control. But it was a yearly effort, and it was a big effort. And I think that having something that's going to last a few years, and they keep the... Kind of the same kind of a theme, but improving it with the LEDs is going to be a really nice change this year.
All right, thank you. I didn't realize that they... I know they worked on it every year, but I didn't realize that they were actually replacing all of that stuff. Okay.
They are. And actually, Terry's comments reminded me as well. You know, I mentioned some of the monetary donations, but Veer Camp has also offered up to handle the traffic control and equipment for the installation of the lights. So all the time, a material's paying his crews to be out there, and it will be... The schedule right now, the tentative schedule, is that with council's approval this evening, the lights across Main Street would be installed on the 17th, and the Christmas tree lights would be installed on the 21st, with the operation of them coming at the Festival of Lights.
All right. Thank you for the additional information.
Could I ask a question?
You certainly can.
Rebecca, I remember... I know Western Sign did a lot, but wasn't there a company, Echo Lighting, that was involved?
Eco Signs.
Eco?
Yeah, Eco Signs is the other company. They're involved in putting on the lamp posts, and they also work on the bell tower.
Okay.
Yes, there is another.
Okay.
Karen, did you have a question?
I have a question, just a comment that I'm really excited for this, and really thankful for everybody that came together to make this happen. I think it's going to be great to have downtown lit up.
All right. Let me go ahead and open up public comment on this item, and ask any member of the public that wishes to address the council on item 12.3, the various Christmas lighting improvements that we planned.
I think that Rebecca and the city has done a fantastic job collecting donations to get this job done without a hit on the city budget, especially when you can't predict that your major sign company is going to change hands and they won't be able to do it. So, good job recovering. Murphy still lives in Placerville, but he doesn't always win.
Thank you, Sue. Is there any other member of the public wishing to comment on this item?
So, maybe this would be the appropriate time to thank Western Sign.
Well, we'll get to that in just a moment. I think, yeah.
It's really the reason I'm here. Anyway.
Good evening, sir.
I would like to... They... City staff, Rebecca, and then the folks that got involved. I was involved. I've been involved with this, actually, for about a year and a half or so, trying to come up with an idea, and I had some ideas. And then we met one day with some real smart young people that got their act together, and within probably about an hour, we... They. Dennis and I were standing there, so we're going to take some credit for this.
I think, yep.
Yeah, yeah.
I think I was there.
Osmosis. Dennis and I were standing there. But these young people had great ideas, and then all of a sudden, like, Matt went into like, I can make that happen, and I can do that, and we can do this, and boom, it was done. And then you got people with some money that actually put their money where their mouths are, and they stepped up and really did something great. And I'm the least part of that. My check is maybe the smallest one that's going to come in, so I, once again, I'm, you know, I'm doing this because I love the town. But those people deserve the credit, so when you see Matt and Ryan and all these people, give them a pat on the back and really thank them, they made this happen. And what's really amazing is something that would have probably taken forever is going to get done in a course of about six weeks, which is truly remarkable. So hats off to them. They're the future of this town, by the way, and so the more of that we get, the better off we're all going to be. And I'm really excited this year about the Festival of Lights. I think it's going to be bigger and better than ever. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clarici. Is there any other member of the public wishing to address the council on this item? Seeing no one else approaching the podium, close the public comment and bring it back to the council for action. Does anyone like to make a motion? Is there no questions? Patty, Councilmember Borelli, Councilmember Thomas, seconded. Is any other discussion? There is money involved, so I'll ask clerk to call the roll.
Mayor Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Go forth and make lights, Christmas lights. We absolutely do need, I'll work with city staff to look towards doing appropriate recognition for all the years that Western Sign and the Brazelton family helped us without question downtown and actually probably made the first Festival of Lights happen. So, yeah, we will absolutely, proclamation seems like it would be appropriate to recognize those years, and we probably ought to do a thank you, a very nice thank you for all those generous, the generous list of supporters that Rebecca was able to share with us this evening, and as Mr. Clarici said, that was some significant dollars.
No amount, it's too small.
And Sue said too also, very nice, very generous contributions did come from the city, and that's, I'm excited to see it. Dennis, thank you for your commitment to making it lit down there.
Oh, I am so excited. This, this, this Festival of Lights, I know, this is going to be, we have so many people involved from so many different angles, and the town's going to be lit up, the tree's going to be lit different than it's ever been lit before. It's going to be, it's going to be, are we doing infill? Are we doing infill on the lights?
We are.
Yes, okay, so.
Infill?
Infill, what the difference is, you know, our Christmas tree has looked like a pineapple, right, in the past?
Or football.
An infill is actually where you go down each branch and you light each branch around the tree. So they're taking a lot more effort and time. I think there's something like 7,000 lights are going to be on.
About there.
Something ridiculous amount of lights are going to be on it as compared to what we've been doing.
Got their LEDs.
Tree's going to look more lit, the town's going to be lit, we're going to have, we have the faith group community coming in, and they are doing a lot of extra add-ons in, for downtown, and it's going to be a longer event. It's going to be something for when the lights come on, you actually want to stay and hang out because there's going to be more fun things to do.
Who's doing the hayride?
Matt Veer Camp.
Yeah, that, so funny story, how this all kind of came about was after a construction meeting, he looks at me and he says, you know, we need, we need hayrides. And I'm like, what? So then, in talking through the hayrides, yeah, obviously they're, they love antique tractors over in the Veer Camp family, and so he has polished up a beautiful caterpillar. I sent some pictures today, actually. I put rubber tracks on the tracks, so it doesn't do any damage to the roadway, and pulling a flatbed trailer. The intent of it is to allow patrons to, it's operating every Saturday of December, and I believe it goes from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM, where you're specifically not conflicting with Davy Dockweiser's Stagecoach runs as well. And it would, they would serve refreshments to the patrons, and the proceeds from the hayride goes to a different charity each weekend, Boys and Girls Club, Big Brothers Big Sisters, CASA, and there was another one. I apologize, I can't, it's case made.
So they're going to have like a little stand to charge, to sell tickets?
Yeah, and I don't recall exactly how much it is, but it's not excessive.
Right there at the bell tower, just?
We, we planned the route. It does start actually a little closer to like the Cary House, and then it comes and loops up, actually right around here, and then heads back down to Main Street. The whole ride, round trip is about 10 minutes.
That's very different, Patty. Just forget about every ride you've ever had down there. Go this time, and that'll be every...
Every Saturday in December.
Thank you. And there's several of them.
Yes.
Terrific.
Thank you, Dennis. Thank you. I'm into Christmas lights also. I'm excited to see this. Lights are a good thing. All right, let's see, we need to get back to 12.1 at some point. I guess, do you want to do it now? Okay. Well, let's finish this up, we'll get back to that. 12.4, adopt, approve contractor amendment with REY Engineering and authorize staff to issue notice to proceed number six. City engineer, Rebecca Neves.
Yes, this item supports the Broadway Sidewalks project proceeding through final design and the related budget appropriations.
I need to recuse myself?
Oh, yes, sorry.
We will stop. And Councilmember Thomas is declaring a conflict of interest because he is a property owner along the project route. He meant to say that before he left, I'm sure. So clerk will note that at 9:12. All right, I heard the door close. Thank you very much. Please go ahead.
Sure. As I mentioned, this project supports the Broadway Sidewalks project proceeding through final design and related budget appropriations. You may recall that this project consists of gap closure pedestrian facilities from Mosquito Road to Chanel School Road within the Broadway corridor, and includes also roadway and pavement repair in the project limits as well. This project is primarily funded through the Highway Safety Improvement Program with some Measure L funds to address the roadway improvements. Per the schedule in staff's report, and barring any further delay with utility coordination, construction is estimated to start late summer of 2020. Staff's recommendations of the contract amendment number four with REY engineers, as well as the related budget appropriation, are shown in the report, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Rebecca. Is there any questions for our city engineer?
I don't have any.
All right, hearing none, I'll go ahead and open public comment on this item. That's 12.4. Notice to proceed number six revolving the Broadway Sidewalk project.
Sue Rodman, Measure L Committee. The reason that you see the appropriation there for Measure L is in order to finish this and make it a really good job, the highway safety didn't cover everything that needed to be done. There were some repairs to Broadway that couldn't be done from those fronts, so Measure L was suggested that we put in money to make it so the project could be complete and done correctly, and so Measure L supported doing that.
Thank you, Sue. I was going to ask next question, and I just found out Measure L has, is there, and there is a clear connection as to its use for those funds. Is there any other member of the public wishing to address the council on item 12.4? Seeing no one else approaching the podium, I will close public comment, bring it back to the council for discussion and actions. If there's no other questions on this, would someone like to make a motion?
I'll move to approve the contract amendment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Borelli. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. If somebody could get Councilmember Thomas? Oh, never mind. Thank you anyway, Nick. My bad. All right. All right. The next item is 12.5.
I will be recusing myself on item 12.5 because my wife has property joining this particular project.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Thomas. We will wait for you to leave the room. Thank you. We should have him make some coffee while he's back there.
Put him to work.
All right. Is he in the secret box? Thank you. All right, 12.5.
I'll try to make this quick since it's the late hour. You may recall that at your September 24th, 2019 meeting, you awarded a contract with Dewberry Drake Haglen to complete a feasibility study on how to address the failing culvert located at Hangtown Creek in the Jack Russell Brewery parking lot. The draft study has been completed and is attached to staff's report and potential alternatives, as well as their estimated costs to deliver or summarize. The alternatives range from partial replacement to full replacement and then to also outright removal. Tonight's item is to receive and file the draft feasibility study with staff returning at a later date with recommendations for how to address the culvert and supporting funding. That concludes staff's report, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Well, that was quick. I wish the price was lower. All right, questions for our city engineer on this? Patty, yes, please.
When was this put in? Do you, is there, do we know?
I found as-built dating around the '30s. I will have to check it out, though. We have, there's a couple of conflicting plans, and then obviously that area and the parcel have changed ownership several times over between private ownership, state ownership, city ownership, and unfortunately for us, it right now does currently reside within city right of way.
Unfortunately what?
It does reside within city right of way.
Yeah, it's ours, it's in our property.
I was just, it was a curious thing to know whether the businesses that were down there, and if I remember correctly, it was for car places and service stations, and I just wondered if they were the ones that put this in so they could have additional property, or if we maybe don't even know if we've lost that.
Yeah, I mean, as to why it was...
Why wasn't it left as an open creek, yet no running?
Right, and I would imagine it probably stemmed from some of the reasons that you listed.
Same way with a lot of these businesses down here.
Correct, yeah, they tried to utilize additional space, usable space.
Okay.
Buy a box in the culvert. Pretty common.
Oh, my goodness.
So this rotting timber thing, that's what they did in those days? Never?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah.
Never thinking it was going to rot?
Well, you know, it was kind of one of those things. Yeah. I don't think they're here to argue with us either.
What could go wrong, right? Well, I for one was just shocked by the prices.
Oh, my God, yeah. But then you stop and think about what it is.
And then thinking about all of the, the remaining timbers, we're just going to magically assume that they're okay. No.
Well, the good news is the culvert, half of it has the timber stringers and half of it doesn't, so it's a total length of about 200 feet.
How many?
The portion, 200.
200, thank you.
The portion that we're looking at is the 100-foot that does have the timber stringers.
Thank you for that.
And the rest has what, concrete?
It has a concrete deck.
Okay.
Yeah.
That doesn't have compromised rebar?
It does not.
Oh, this is good news. All right, thank you. If there's no questions, thank you, Rebecca. I'll go ahead and open public comment on this item, item 12.5, the recommendations for the repairs at the Hangtown Creek Culvert at Jack Russell Brewery. Inviting members of the public to address the council on this item. Good evening, Mr. Smith.
Yes, Mayor, I have some questions. The first one is I believe that the agreement that the city formed with the tenant was that they were to be responsible for carrying insurance, a $1 million policy that would cover the property. So it seems like that would be appropriate to have the insurance cover this, to at least seek an offset, because that's what it was for, a million dollar insurance to cover the property for such things as falling apart. So is that, is that the case? Did somebody look at that issue and seek to have the insurance coverage?
We'll see if we can get an answer for you on that.
So that's, that's one of the questions I have for you.
Okay.
The second is that I remember when this was brought up, there was a suggestion that to avoid the conflict of interest, that the lease for the property was going to go with the tenant and not with the owners because of the put-off family or Thomas family owning it. But then when I saw a few months ago, or maybe it was close to last year, that the Jack Russell Brewery was seeking to sell, it was disclosed the terms of their lease, and it was disclosed that the put-off family gets a percentage of the profits from Jack Russell Brewery. Was that something that you had available to you? The third, the third question is about the general plan, which calls for whenever possible, that Hangtown Creek should be opened up. So if you, one of the options to look at is to not replace the culvert, but to leave it open, because that's part of your general plan, is to wherever possible, open up the creek, that natural landscape. The other question is, I know this is long ago, I've looked at it, but there's a doctrine of independent significance of covenants for commercial property, which is that, you know, in residential property, the house burns down, you don't have to pay. Now, I don't know if these folks are paying for the rent on the parking while it's limited, but with commercial property, if the building burns down, you still have to pay the rent because the covenant to pay the rent is separate from the covenant to provide the property. The lease goes to the land. It's old doctrine. I don't know if it applies in California or if it'd apply here, but it seems like it's the responsibility, you know, it's not with the city. But being concerned about taxpayers, I'd want to look, make sure that every effort to try to make sure that we're not stuck with the bill is maintained, because that's a big cost. And what do we get for it? Like dollars of parking space? Doesn't sound like it's a good business investment. So I'd rather make sure that we explored the insurance policy and make sure that if the tenants are responsible, they, they take it. Thirdly, that one of the options that needs to be explored is opening up the creek, which necessarily may reduce parking spaces, but that's part of your general plan and the public interest. So those are things I hope you look at before we talk about throwing out a million dollars, a million and a half for it.
Thank you. We'll see if we can get those answered for you. Is there another member of the public wishing to address the council on this item?
Sue Rodman, you guys are going to sicken me today, I think.
Could you talk a little louder, Sue?
Sure.
There.
Is that better?
Yeah, thank you, Sue.
I also wonder why we couldn't open up the creek and leave it open and take the culvert out. And if we have to replace that culvert, then option 2A looks like it's the most feasible situation to, for a long-term solution, because the cheapest solution is only, I think, is just a short term. Can you hear me?
Yeah, you're doing fine. Thank you.
You know, the other one, the, the option 2C, or option 2B, is, still has the problem of having the culvert degrade over time. Metal culverts do that. I would, in the Forest Service, we had an old culvert up at one of the campgrounds, and it had deteriorated to the point where it was collapsing and vehicles were actually falling off of it, and we finally yanked it and built a bridge, and it was a much better solution. So we need to do the long-term solutions. We've done enough short-term solutions in the city. I think we've learned our lesson not to do that. So, but opening it up and leaving the creek open seems like that's another solution we really ought to look at and see what's the cost on that.
Thank you very much, Sue. We'll see, we'll take your comments into consideration. I think we've run out of, is any else, other comments from the public? Seeing no one else, I'll close public comment, bring it back to the council. Mr. Driscoll, I'm sure you were taking copious notes regarding Mr. Smith's questions regarding insurance coverage and the, would you like to address his?
I haven't looked at that lease for a long time, so I can't tell you what's in it at this point, and I would have to go back and look at the provisions of the lease, especially those relating to insurance, before I could give you an opinion as to whether or not that insurance was meant to cover this situation or not.
All right, is it, do you feel it would be worth our while to, or worth your time to investigate that?
Yeah, I mean, I'm happy to take a look at it, and I will. The other thing he mentioned is about whether or not rent would be abated during a period of time when you can't use property. I think he used an example of a house burning down or something like that. Typically leases have provisions in them that reduce or abate the rent if you can't use the property. Again, I have to look at the lease to see that before I can tell you what's in this one, because I don't recall.
All right, thank you, John. Cleve, did you have anything else to add? Cleve, did you have anything else to add?
Regarding that issue, what we agreed to do with Jack Russell is we took five spaces on what I call Old Canal Street adjacent to the property in exchange for the five spaces they're unable to use right now that they are leasing. So we are allowing them, we have those signed as Jack Russell Brewery parking in the interim until we can figure out what we can do with that, so.
All right, thank you. So that, that addresses those comments from the public, and of course, we've heard the concern about just considering opening up the creek from...
Mayor, could I just, I forgot a shit about it, maybe Rebecca was going to, but option 3 is the option to open up the creek. So if you look at those, that is part of the consideration, so.
Yeah, alternative 3 addresses looking at removal without replacement and a cost of $760,000 is present in the, in staff's report.
And how many parking spaces are eliminated by doing that?
Yeah, how many parking places would we lose? No, that's a bunch, isn't it?
No, so if you look at the exhibit, it's at the very last part of the report. You'll see there's a grayed, out-hatched area where, oh, you're talking about the reconfiguration of the parking?
If we open it up.
Yeah, if we open it up, yeah, no, it's a decent dent, yeah.
It's how many?
I don't recall exactly how many, I believe it's...
Kara said 16.
My esteemed colleague.
I would likely reduce the amount of available parking from 39 to about 16, so.
It's a significant...
Yeah.
Significant amount of parking spaces.
It's also not the cheapest alternative.
Imagine that.
But how we have wished that we had that creek open, here's an opportunity.
It's true. Oh, pardon me, Kara, you had a question for?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions for staff.
Thank you.
I was curious what the rent that we currently receive for the 39 spaces is?
Good question.
Just so you know, it's not the whole 39 spaces. Their whole entire parking lot, I believe, is 39 spaces. We only lease them what would be the row on that, that back facing the creek. So the whole, all the 39 is not ours. I wanna say it's 10 spaces that we lease them. I don't have that dollar figure in front of me, and I don't think Dave Warren can tell me either.
I bet he can.
But maybe, but, so I'm not sure what the amount, that amount is that they pay on the lease.
But wait, those are...
Okay, and then, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
And then I was wondering if, Rebecca, if you had an estimate, because the permits from the regulatory agencies were not included in these prices, so I was wondering if you had any type of ballpark about what that would be for the different options?
Not offhand. A fair amount of some of the pros and cons listed in the feasibility study did cover how the impacts of costs related to mitigation or permitting would play into each alternative, and that's certainly something that we're going to bring forward back, considered in staff's recommendations. Again, this is just the draft feasibility study, and if I may, just, we're in a place right now, we're receiving and filing, we're all kind of in digestion mode of this information, including staff. And so we actually do have a meeting set up with the consultant later on this month to start dialing in on some actual feasible options, what kind of funding we could find, et cetera. There is a DWR grant, Department of Water Resources grant, that's coming up available here shortly. This project would qualify for that, and so there might be a way to have it delivered. This does not, unfortunately, qualify for the highway bridge program. It is defined, the space, clear spaces, actually less than 20-foot clear span width, which is what the definition of a bridge actually is. Did that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
That was good information, thank you. And so we were talking about replacing 10 parking places, kind of one way to look at this, correct, Cleve?
Correct.
And these are leased monthly?
I believe it was 10 spaces, yes.
To Jack Russell?
No, it's a, it's an annually, in fact, I think it was a three- or four-year lease with, or in fact, it might even be longer than that. Anyway, it's a longer-term lease that we lease. I wanna say perhaps that it was, I'm thinking about 10 years was what we leased them, because they wanted that, in order to enter into an agreement, they needed, wanted to have a guarantee that they would have parking for their facility. So I think it's a 10-year lease, actually.
So we're locked into that.
Correct.
But we could give them other spaces like we've done.
Yeah, we could negotiate that with them if, I'm sure that, let's say, I, as John mentioned, I haven't looked at it for some time either, but I would assume that there's a termination clause in there for whatever reason, so we could look at that.
Is it with the put-offs, or is it with Jack Russell?
It's with Jack Russell.
It's with Jack Russell, okay, thank you. Mr. Warren, did you have some data?
Mr. Mayor, the lease is approximately $411 per month.
Thank you, Dave. I knew you could do it. To figure out, if we went $1.7 million at $411 a lease amount... One of the thoughts that I've had is, this is, this has always been kind of a convoluted, who owned what parking lot in my mind? It's been pieced together. The only agency that Rebecca didn't mention was the railroad, because the old street is actually, was a spur that went over to the Diamond Box Company, which is now where something is sitting there. Maybe it's Buttercup. Anyway, Pacific Street Extension, et cetera. Since we are looking at a significant amount of money, would it make sense to, if we just went, wiped the slate clean? We've got, you know, a big row of bushes in there that, because there's all these different property lines, and there's the curvature from the old railroad line, if we were to just, it obviously would take a mutual agreement between the property owners, but to just start over, if we could open the creek up and still gain back our parking places by reconfiguring that whole thing. The Caboose Plaza was a project that went on for a long time and is really gone nowhere, and the chief probably spends more time than anybody, or not the chief himself, but his dedicated officers making sure that that site is clearing, safe.
And all they're doing is using it for storage.
So is it time to kind of look at getting rid of the...
So if I may...
Have you guys looked at that?
One piece of information, too, is that the parking lease actually does include the use of the pole sign as well. And then, again, I just kind of want to reiterate, this is just a receive and file, we're all just in digestion mode, so going in one direction right now might be a little bit like putting the cart before the horse, but, you know, at council's discretion, it can certainly be considered. Staff is taking notes of all the questions and making sure that we come back with thoughtful recommendations and that can be in a place to have those deeper discussions on it, but I think it might be a little early for that. I do want to talk to the consultant and talk to them about how to get those prices down, and we could come up with some creative strategies for that as well.
Okay, I just, if, sometimes, you know, I thought if we get rid of all the old enders and we reconfigure that whole thing, somebody could have said, "Oh, man, I could do a great parking lot if I could start over."
Well, and I can talk to Rebecca more about that, but that may be an option, as I hadn't thought of, you know.
I think it's a great idea.
In terms of, you know, eliminating that little street that goes back in there and making it more like a parking lot, maybe plaza combination type thing that could increase.
With an open creek?
With an open creek, yeah, exactly, yeah.
That's where I'm getting.
So there may be options there, and we can, we can go back and look at those and...
Maybe it's time to move the caboose.
Maybe.
Put it down on the old Stone Bridge at the west end of town, which was very historic, hand-cut granite.
Wasn't there some talk about moving it up to the depot?
No, we've always talked about... Oh, a previous city engineer wanted to open a coffee stand. Randy Paces is happily retired in Diamond Springs now, so we don't have to worry about that.
Well, there was talk about...
No, I'm serious about moving the caboose down and putting it on the Stone Bridge, but that's a discussion for a much earlier meeting than this one. All right, so this is a receive and file.
I was gonna say, Rebecca, how much, how much time do you think it'll take between, back with the consultant to come back with some more alternatives or suggestions?
We're, we have a meeting scheduled towards the end of this month, kind of pending holidays. It might be a little soon to say December, but I'll work with Cleve on if we're bringing it back either in December, because we, again, we have only one meeting in November and one meeting in December as well. So I'll work with Cleve and see schedule-wise if we're bringing it in December or first meeting in January.
I think it kind of makes sense, I mean, from the comments here, that if, even if it went longer, if you're having that larger discussion about what we can do, it probably makes sense to take some time to look at all options.
I agree.
So the, the request here of this evening is to receive this report, and we've given staff direction? Blank slate. All right, thank you very much. That is an expensive little cave-in, amazing the cost.
But you know what, maybe it's gonna promote us, yeah, you know?
Yes, it could lead to a lot of...
Something bigger and better.
A lot of bigger and betters. All right, we still need to go back to 12.1.
We still have to.
Do we need to invite Dennis?
Yeah, oh, Dennis.
Oh, yes, please go wake Mr. Thomas.
He's eating cookies back there.
If he has cookies, he has to bring them forward. That didn't work, did it? All right, we move back to item 12.1, adopt a resolution condemning the actions and procedures of PG&E to shut off power to residents, businesses, and public facilities in the city of Placerville. Mr. Morris?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As everyone is well aware, on October 9th, 23rd, 26th, and 29th, PG&E shut off power in the city of Placerville and the larger area around Placerville also. The resolution that's proposed for you tonight is similar to what we did a year ago. I think we have a lot more data, but obviously we had a bigger impact this year than we did a year ago. But it's a similar situation, and we've, after talking with the mayor, felt that it was appropriate that we should, again, send a similar resolution, and then follow up also. Mayor and I have had some conversations with our representative, Brandon Sanders, about this and what we might do, and we're looking at setting up a meeting with them, with him, and with some of his superiors to try and talk about what really happened here in Placerville in terms of winds and et cetera that we were not affected by. One thing that we did get after these last outages, I asked Dave Warren to work with HDL again to look at the effect that it had on us. They just, I think just yesterday or today, we got this, Dave, from them, yesterday, they stated that for the last four events, so the October 9th event through the other three, through the, basically the 30th, those four events, they estimated $100,900 in lost sales tax revenue to the city total, and, which equates to over $5 million in lost taxable sales in the city during that period of time. So again, that's totaling approximately, I'm looking at, for about eight days that we were without power. And we did, we did communicate with them that there were certain portions that were on, that's why they adjusted the numbers. These, these are actually a little bit lower than what they would have been based on what they gave us last time when we asked for it. And they adjusted those based on the businesses that we knew. Obviously, with the generator system that PG&E set up, allowed parts of Broadway and Main Street to remain on during that time, so there were some cells that continued during that time. So based on that, we do have that information for you, and it's possible that if we wanted to. In fact, there is one statement in the, in the resolution that states an estimated loss was approximately $1 million a day. Based on this, these numbers, it's a little bit less than that, so we may want to revise that number to reflect our estimate that we got, we received from HDL. Again, the purpose of this is to reiterate and point out to PG&E that we do not feel that, with the exception of one day, of all of those, we do not feel there was any significant weather event that affected the city of Placerville and would warrant, would have warranted shutting off the power here. We confirmed that also, we've been in contact, the mayor especially, in contact with Fire Chief Lloyd Ogan, who they did keep track of wind speeds and et cetera throughout the event, and they are still working on getting that information to us. They're gonna provide that information to us to show what those, those winds were during that time to justify, both wind and humidity during that time. I think that's all I have to report on. We're open to, if there's changes, I'm gonna suggest that we make a change to the one clause that talks about a loss of $1 million a day in taxable sales. We can adjust that based on what we just received from the county, or from HDL, excuse me. And if there's any other changes that you would suggest, I do want to point out that we did receive a request, a comment from Sue Rodman, I think Sue sent that to me today or yesterday, today, maybe, about perhaps including in there the, she specifically referred to the wind speeds on the 27th, and that was the one day that we did have wind, talking about the duration of the wind, et cetera, so maybe we would want to add some data, some information regarding that, but I'll leave that up to the council if you think it's important to add additional information or data, so.
Thank you very much, Cleve.
Yes, all right. The, one of the things that, being a downtown merchant, and, by the way, just want to make it clear, I had nothing to do with my half of the streets' lights coming on and the other half of the streets not, because there was some, there was some discussion that I had something to do with that, that I had nothing to do with that. The lost wages for employees downtown, and the fact that some of them said, "I can't even make my rent this month because of this," and the, the social impact to, to a lot of these people who are getting along paycheck by paycheck that did not get paychecks. And I don't know how you calculate that, but there, but I guarantee you, it is a real number, and it is a real impact to our community and to these, and to the young people in this town. And it, I don't care what the age, that's, what is that called, ageism, I guess, I don't know. I'm sure some elderly people have challenges, too. But the broad spectrum of everybody that did not receive their paycheck during that time is, 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 is very impactful. I don't know how else to say it, it really stinks.
Well, the, just as a, for instance, along those lines, the lady that owns the restaurant in my building, she was very aware that her employees could not afford to stay home. She needed to pay them, so she made a cleaning day out of it, she had them down, and then she, she actually ended up going to Reno and buying a generator to keep, you know, so that they could keep working, and I, I think that this is, you know, she went beyond, above and beyond, but she realized the need to keep these kids working, and, and I, I haven't heard so much in Placerville, but I keep hearing a lot over in Nevada where businesses are completely closing because of the loss of money. I don't know whether that happened here or not, I haven't, like I say, I haven't seen it on the... So it was a horrible thing, I don't, I, honest to God, I'm not gonna take on PG&E and try and solve this problem, but Mark, I wanted to ask you, maybe you know, now PG&E did bring in, was it two large generators or three? So do they have a lot of these generators that, I mean, why couldn't they take it into other towns or...
Or Placerville Drive and other, Broadway and everyone's neighborhoods?
That was a successful campaign by Brandon Sanders to advocate for Placerville, because we pushed him so hard last year, Acting City Manager, Rivas, and I were here. It was helpful that we started pushing last year. That didn't happen in a lot of places, they did take a generator into Grass Valley to keep part of Grass Valley energized, it was the only two cities that I know of, but I got the impression from Brandon that he fought hard to get that. There's a gentleman that's a scout leader.
Oh, yeah.
Pierre met him at, Mr. Peters? You met him down at Broadway, Pierre, the night that they brought the, put the generators in the line.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember the gentleman's name, he was the electrical engineer.
Todd Jones.
Well, that was close, Todd Jones.
It's late.
He's a friend of Cleve's.
I had the opportunity to speak with him briefly at the Veterans Day event, and, you know, it's tough to deal with them, because they were really pleased that they brought those generators in, but at the same time... At the same time, they shut down a perfectly functioning system when there was no weather. So I, I know that they, they want a certain acknowledgement for what they did. But, you know, Dennis has made the same story that I've had. I haven't been able to really figure out a way to, how do you figure out all of the employee wages were lost? All of the extra expenses for daycare, the expenses to schools, to the lost and damage to the appliances. I mean, that's a little secret that's starting to roll in now. And it just goes on and on and sadly, until we get a strong storm, we actually still could have another one of these events. Very, in the next two weeks, we are not out of the woods yet.
So will they bring in generators again? I mean, does, I think that some merchants downtown relied on that once it was there. Now, are they gonna have that same experience or do we not know?
We don't know.
There's, there's no guarantee. We would probably push strong for it again, but there's no guarantee.
So did it facilitate, I mean, the reasoning behind it, was it what I'm hearing for Marshall Hospital specifically?
No, Marshall Hospital was out for hundreds of hours.
So tell me then, why are we entitled? Why is Main Street entitled? Pierre just said, "Why can't we bring it down to Placerville Drive or put it up on Broadway?"
That section of Main Street was served by underground lines, is my understanding.
That's part of it, yeah.
So it only, those only work for underground?
Just so you know, no, we were advocating that, you know, you didn't need to shut down.
Oh, yeah, we pushed it.
We were pushing hard on that. At no time did we advocate, "Hey, you need to power up downtown." That was not a push that we ever did. They did that. That came from, as Mark said, Brandon Sanders wanted to do something and that was at his insistence. We did not advocate, say, "It's downtown and needs to be powered up."
Well, I'm glad somebody, you know, was there.
They, that generator installation was a response, I think, to our driving on them pretty hard throughout this event as well as last year's. The wording that I heard was that the San Francisco Control Group reviewed the situation and deemed Broadway and Main Street a safe fire risk zone. And that was why they were energized. There are overhead and underground lines, but it was only from, well, Cleve and I, for weeks, we were telling, "It comes from underground, right out of your substation." The other big issue was they ignored completely our critical facilities list that we prepared under their timetable last year. Marshall Hospital was out almost 40 hours during one outage. So they had no respect whatsoever for that. It wasn't the only community hospital, I found out. There were a lot of them in the foothills that were without power. So that wasn't an attention getter for PG&E. One of the things that was interesting is the Missouri Flat Corridor was deemed as an essential circuit in a safe fire zone. And a good portion of that line is in just as many live oaks and scrub brush as anything we have on Placerville Drive or Broadway or Main Street. But again, this is the criteria that the San Francisco Operational Group has done. A lot of input appears to come from CAL FIRE. They're scared to death of CAL FIRE in any fire ratings that they, if CAL FIRE won't bless a plan, PG&E won't do it. Is the impression that I got out of this, when you say, Cleve.
They're trying to assign the risk to somebody else.
Yeah, and so they're, uh-
So maybe we need to talk to CAL FIRE.
Well, that was why Chief Lloyd Ogan, I can't thank Chief Ogan enough. He's just was an advocate throughout every one of these outages. He had his field personnel go out to fire stations at the western, let's see, in our northern, northern, southern ends of, edges of the county and take actual fire weather readings, just like his crews would use out on a CAL FIRE wildland event. And at, only on that one Sunday did they come up with anything that met their criteria. And frequently, they didn't come up with weather readings that even met red flag warning criteria. PG&E refused to, Brandon took it in and was, was denied. It wouldn't be considered by the Operational Group. So I think Cleve and I, and Chief Ogan's intent is to get that all summarized and present that to PG&E as well as the Public Utility Commission. And, you know, the governor came up to a couple of grade schools down in rescue a week or two ago. In fact, I'd known he was there, I would've gone down and forced my way into that so that I could've shared with him a million dollars a day lost to a town of 10,000 people. I don't know why he was hiding it in elementary school, but-
Which they, by the way, did operate without power, right?
Yeah.
Is that what he was trying to, that was his-
I was very disappointed on that.
They brought in some portable generators and-
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I think the teachers did. But, you know, I promise not to talk about this a lot and I will just say that I think Cleve and I have discovered a lot of higher level issues, errors that PG&E absolutely needs to have presented to them. But I will leave with this one comment. Towards the last outage, we found out from Brandon that El Dorado County, for PG&E's operational convenience, is included in an old system divisions arrangement where we are lumped in with Placer, Yuba, and Sierra Counties. And then at one time, this was a, it was called Sierra Division. And our weather is nothing like what happens in Grass Valley or up in the, up at Yuba River Canyon and so on. But maybe, "Well, unfortunately, you guys are just lumped in with Auburn, so your power has to go off." When Auburn goes off, Emmett County, Calaveras, and Toolumbe County either didn't have outages or had outages of just a few hours. So we are trying very hard to get that simple point across to PG&E. It's just a very serious, deep flaw. So I think-
Mayor, is Missouri Flat, is there a substation there?
Yes, sir, yeah. There's a substation right there at Missouri Flat and Enterprise that controls both the transmission and the distribution system. That was where PG&E elected to open the transmission circuit. SMUDs, I don't think, had any problems with their transmission lines during any of this. And Cleve and I are working diligently. Some of the members of this district have volunteered to help patrol the line, trying to figure out why PG&E feels there's such a tremendous wildfire risk from Missouri Flat Road to the substation on Broadway when the same line goes from Missouri Flat Road to Shingle Springs and goes through all kinds of wildland country, big long spans, exposed ridge tops, et cetera. So there, they have, they have no valid answers that I can come up with.
Do they ever come up this way or do they just sit in San Francisco and make these decisions?
The local folks, let me make a distinction. The local folks have been absolutely outstanding. They have worked really hard to get the circuits back. Their hands are completely tied. They are not being listened to.
Okay, like the Forest Service.
Yeah, they're, our local PG&E guys did a great job. And please don't anybody in the public take anything out on anybody in a blue truck.
No, I, I was just, how, how are we gonna get that message to San Francisco?
I think it really needs to go to the Public Utilities Commission. That's where the fault lies. Should we do public comment?
Sure.
Is there any member of the public wishing to address the council on 12.1 as we approach the 10 o'clock hour?
Everybody wants to let off steam.
Sue knows a mistake when she sees one.
Yes. Sue Rodman, a very unhappy PG&E customer and resident of Placerville. And I sent my comments into Cleve earlier today to, just basically, the resolution to rewrite that a little bit. I just changed the order so that it was a little bit stronger to say PG&E screwed up, guys. And then on item, the purpose, there is the last sentence where you say taxed city and resources and threatened. You need to take out that first and and say taxed city resources and threatened. And then in the very, the other part of the last sentence says, says, "Placerville, when no real risk existed." I think I would change that to say, "When no real exists, real risk as advertised by PG&E existed." But, and I would add the actual wind speed for October 27th and if duration is known, it'd be good to add that as well.
Sue, can I ask, are you looking at the actual resolution or at the staff report?
Well, under, where it gives you the option to look at everything, it says, "Here's the resolution." So I was looking at the actual resolution. I hope it's part of your staff report, right?
Well, it's attached to the staff report, yeah. I'm just not following where, that language that you were talking about there. And I couldn't match it up with what you sent me, so I'm just, I'm not objecting to it. I'm just trying to figure out where-
What she's saying, we should change the wording.
It says, "Resolution to condemn PG&E for what I call the perfectly stupid power shutdown." And under, it says, "Discussion, city officials did not have direct communication with PR PG&E."
Well, that, that, okay, so that, that's actually-
Brandon Sanders.
That's not part of the resolution. That's just part of my staff report to the city council.
Okay, so apparently-
The resolution is actually on another page separate from that. That's, that's what I thought I was seeing. I just wanna make sure.
Okay.
So.
Then I guess my comments have no value then. So it's just part of your staff report.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Sue.
You have a good point that we might wanna add these things to the resolution.
Good evening, Mr. Smith.
At the end, I hope I did read the resolution. But when you said that we could wind up having this problem in the next two weeks, you're right. We went through it last year. But that's still a gross understatement because PG&E is talking about, "We're gonna face this for 10 years."
Yep.
And when you described really heartfelt problems that merchants have faced, you were just touching the surface. Because all the heroic efforts that merchants went through to stay open, the problem is, a lot of folks didn't know it, so they didn't go down there. You lost the foot traffic. It's horrible. And I know that for Marshall that you talked about, they've got four generators up there now. But for cardio rehab that was supposed to start last month, they got canceled twice because they don't have a generator that covers that facility. So you've just touched the surface. You've done, all of you, an exceptional job. I've heard about those stories of coming in at night and calling PG&E and you've certainly rattled some cages and gotten some results. And part of the dilemma you have is, as I hear it, you don't wanna beat up folks who come through for you, but at the same time, they're negligent. Face it, when people talk about, "Why are we going after PG&E and not Southern Cal, Con Edison?", well, the reason is negligence. One word, negligence. How many corporations do you know of in the state of California that are, that were charged criminally for murder, for manslaughter, PG&E? They're, they're under a court order probation for, you know, a few more years because of what they did for the negligence with natural gas in Oakland Hills. And then, and then all this stuff for billions of dollars in damages and it's gonna keep going up and up and up. It's negligence. So here's a theory for you. Bear with me for a moment. It's gonna be pedantic. But if those fires and, and the nuclear or the, the gas explosion was negligence, the reason they're cutting, cutting off the power now is negligence. It's the same thing. So you could sue them, but you're not gonna get the merchants or the, the law firms that have already sued because when you file a new bankruptcy, a new case, it's not, it's gonna take priority over, over the first one. And you don't wanna do too much to PG&E because I don't wanna wipe out their retirement funds, which I think happened about 15 years ago. Let me make a suggestion. I've before talked about San Jose and about 20 municipalities that have gone on record of saying they want to take over, you know, so it'll be like SMUD. And you'd have them devoted to taking care of us instead of, you know, stockholders. I don't think you're gonna do that. Politically, you're sticking your neck out too far. But what you can do politically, I think, is join on and, and ask for the, you know, support the governor in what he's talking about. Because his phrases are very broad, they're very general. He hasn't gotten to anything you could argue with right now. He's talking about more oversight with, you know, the Utilities Commission and things that kind. So those are very conservative things, but, you know, who knows whether he'll do it, but the point is, he's stuck his neck out. Now we've gotta make sure he follows through. But that's something you can do because right now, what your resolution does, if I read the right resolution, is it's like saying, "Please, the next time you stab us in the back, please give us some more notice." No, it's not enough. You've gotta hit 'em hard. And you've done a great job of pointing out the negligence and as Sue pointed out last year, there's a big difference between SMUD and PG&E and it's because they've looked at profits over service to the public. My suggestion is you do something stronger and the strongest thing can be to back up the governor. You know, he's got politically his problems in doing that because he got a whole bunch of money. If you look at the front page of the Washington Post today, you know, when some reporter asked him, "Hey, you've got $25,000 in a contribution from PG&E. How are you gonna be tough on him?" Because he and his wife got about $700,000 in recent years. But as long as he's doing it, give him a push. Because it's gotta be more than saying, "Please, give us more notice next time."
Hey, Kurt. Is there any other member of the public wishing to comment on this item? Bring it back to the council for action, discussion.
I have a comment. I, I agree with the comments that we've heard. And I do think that the language could be a little bit stronger. I'd like to see more specifics in terms of like dollars lost and damage. If we have the numbers from HDL, the damage to local businesses more specifically. And I think that we could add the critical facilities to it. And anything that was on the staff report, like the wind speeds on the 27th and the increased risk of fire due to people running their generators, is that in the?
That's not in the resolution, no.
Putting those types of details in the resolution just so that when the governor and lawmakers read this, they get, you know, a more of a understanding of just how bad it's been.
Give examples of why we're saying what we're-
Sure, we can rework it. We can, yeah. Do you want to have that brought back or do you want us, I can work with the mayor on it?
I trust you to go forth.
I'm good with going forward with giving you some. Be mean or nastier.
Be nastier.
Well, do we need to approve it or how?
Can they authorize us to make ch- what I heard is, for example, the, the critical facilities, we don't call it critical facilities, but we, we talk about police, fire, city departments, wastewater plant, those are really the critical. So that is kind of in there already.
But these were facilities that were identified with PG&E last year that they just ignored.
And that, that's what they were, was police, fire, and wastewater were the ones that we identified. So those are kind of in there. Identifying, for example, in my staff report, the, for the following reasons on page two where it talks about the five items. One of those is a critical facility, but those others talking about that and adding some of that language perhaps to that. So perhaps your direction could be to incorporate some of those things more specifics in terms of the dollars, more specifics in terms of what we can, in terms of the weather, the wind speed and et cetera. Add a few more specifics to that. I think the mayor and I could find a way to put that together.
You know, one thing that I don't understand is that if, if there's an emergency, what are the, this, why do they have to give two days' notice or 10 days' notice or whatever that they're going to do this? Why don't they wait until we have an emergency and just shut it off?
Then no one can plan and get-
But why, I mean, if we are aware that there's a terrific emergency, I mean, you know, at any time. Because we've had our power go out sometimes during the winter time when there's been storms.
It happens.
It goes out and we didn't know it was gonna happen, but we, we made adjustments and we lived with it. Why can't we do that with this?
Because it'd be damned if they do and damned if they don't.
Actually, the-
There's, they can predict the weather patterns coming through. You know, one of the challenges I had is, and several restaurants had, is they send employees home because they were said that electricity would be turned off at 2:00. And it wasn't turned off until 8:00 or 9:00 at night. And so they send all, you know, they, they plan for, you know, power outage with their food, either moving it or, or getting prepared. They send all their employees home and there's, you know-
It was incredible.
And then there's, yeah, and there's, so what they're talking, and not only that, it wasn't windy. And it's still, the wind didn't occur.
I don't know.
I would, I would like more actual factual information from PG&E, more specific.
Well, it sounds like, it seems like they can't give it to you.
You know, I mean, it's the weather.
I don't know. I think this... Well, it's not just the weather, too. I think that we were extremely frustrated. And I, I think Mark and I both pushed very hard on our contact to say, okay, is it gonna be two o'clock? Is it gonna be four o'clock? You know, and all we could really get was, and you saw in the reports that I sent to you, was generally a range of time.
So what, what prompted them then to turn it off whenever they did? Wasn't it the weather? I mean, was it...
I can't answer that, because there was no weather. So I, I can't say that that was the reason, so...
Hence, hence we come back to what we started out with.
It goes back to us being included in the northern foothills, instead of either the central or southern foothills.
Well, do we, are we addressing that in this?
Yeah, I think we did. We can clean it up.
I, I think, I think the key, this is not gonna address every, every single problem, obviously, in here. But I think the key is to try to get their attention, so that hopefully they will sit down and talk with us and say, okay, what were the actual conditions? And we, we have already communicated to Brandon that we want to do that. We want to sit down and have, unfortunately, not just to talk with him, but with those that were making the operational procedures to shut down, to show the evidence and the data that we, we told them prior to them shutting down, this is what's going to happen here. We're not gonna see the wind. And now we can verify it based on what actually happened, to say, there was no wind. So that's what our hope is, that we, by putting enough pressure on them, that we can get through to them, and hopefully, they can change some things, such as saying, you're not, you shouldn't be lumped in with Placer County, et cetera, but to the south. And also, we, they need to refine their review to show, you know, you know, to determine when they shut off the power in this area. Because I, I don't disagree...
You mean what they base their...
Yeah. Well, not, not what they base their criteria on, but they need to refine it more. I mean, as far as I can tell, they simply said, well, because I believe for most of those events, there was a red flag warning issued by the National Weather Service. Why the National Weather Service couldn't have refined that more to say, well, it's not gonna include this area? I'm not sure. And I don't know what procedures they follow, but it was frustrating that...
That's what you guys really need to stress, is what you're talking about, you know? I mean, that's what you really...
And, and I think the thing that, and I think this first statement that I have in the resolution, I want to emphasize, you know, by all means, if, if there's a high wind, I want to say, yeah, I understand. Turn, turn the power off, because I do not want us, you know, to be held that they kept it on because we insisted, and then the fire was started because of that. But, you know, all the evidence that we saw, that Mark was providing to me, and we were looking at weather and stuff, I would look at all of my weather information I have on two or three different applications online, et cetera, and, you know, five, six, seven miles an hour, nothing over about ten or eleven miles an hour was what we saw, so...
So are you gonna use that?
I don't know why they couldn't see the same information that we were seeing.
Are you gonna use that information that you compiled from the chief? Is that what, okay?
It needs to go to the Public Utilities Commission and the governor. Yeah, and I'm, what's, so I've talked to Chair, Chairwoman Batch or staff about a meeting for the city of Placerville with them. So they're, they're looking, and I, I think we'll get a meeting with Chairman Batch. She's the new chair of the PUC, so we can go and kind of give our story. I think it's critically important to have the mayor at this meeting with your intimate knowledge of how PG&E operates. So I'm still working on that. I also think we need to get the information to OES and CAL FIRE as well. And then we can, we can circulate that through the governor's office, too, because all those folks are gonna have to have a say in some of this. And if CAL FIRE is the one, sort of, if they're not gonna go against CAL FIRE, we have to at least be able to tell CAL FIRE that our situation is different on this side of the Sierras.
Well, they should know.
They, they should know, but it's always gonna be in the abundance of caution how they're rating these things. And then the National Weather Service just lumps us all in together, so it's an easy out for PG&E to just say, well, this whole region's gonna get shut down and de-energized. I don't even know where you would go there. But I think at the very least, CPUC, OES, CAL FIRE, governor's office are all the, you know, the offices that we have to be able to speak to and get information into. And we can use our legislators as well in this area to, to help facilitate some of that, too.
Is there, is there, in your opinion, is there a timeliness that this goes in this month as opposed to December?
No, I don't think the, this particular resolution, you know, if we want to make sure Cleve hits all the right points on it, is critical in that sense. I think the more critical thing is the information that the chief put together, and any reports that we can put in terms of, of dollars from the HDL report. If they can do any assessment on lost wages, I don't know if that, if that's an ability to do something from HDL as well. Certainly, we know there's been a ton of lost wages. I think those are all the critical things. And then looking at those weather patterns to show that it's just not hitting Placerville in the same way. In fact, large parts of Eldorado County, not just the city of Placerville, I think that's most important. We need to be on the record, and we have to say this, and it's the right thing to do to put the, the resolution forward. But I think even more important is getting that information into a package that, that we can go out and advocate on behalf of our city. Probably have an incident report. Yes. Yeah. So we'll do a second thing. We'll do an incident report, and we'll make sure that we include all the details from county fire.
Yes, absolutely.
And the chief is going to highlight his call volume and the spikes, and the overtime that his group, and the burnout that they had from having to deal with it. So, okay. So the issue still before us is if this resolution was to be acceptable with modifications? Mr. Riscle, what are your thoughts? Do we need a motion? Do we need to bring this back?
I think you can do it with a motion. There's been enough specificity in the modifications that you want, and that you can, you can be authorized to sign the resolution by the council then.
All right, thank you, sir. Would someone like to make a motion? I'll make a motion with the direction... Yeah, with the general direction of what the council has discussed tonight in terms of Cleve reworking the... And then to include the follow-up with a incident report? And to follow up, yes, with an incident report, correct. Been moved and seconded. That seemed appropriate. Incident report can really get the details. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right. We're going to forego section thirteen and move on to requests for future agenda items. Are there any this evening?
Where are we at with the street, oops, sorry?
No problem.
I just yelled at her. It's like, hey, this isn't working. Where are we at with the Clay Street traffic calming measures? And is that something that can be brought back, or...
Yeah, we're working on, did we set a date to bring that back yet, Rebecca, or...
We haven't set a date yet. We can't.
We're, I would hope maybe we could try to shoot for December for a draft, at least, of that, to bring back for you to look at.
Is it, you know, I, I think this is more of, we make sure we take the time to get it all done, and...
Right, and we're, that's what we're trying to do.
The long game rather than the quick short game.
Yeah, yeah. We also, as part of that, can share with you the, the speed report that the police department did, as far as they recently had the, the traffic trader up there and the results of that. So we can look at maybe doing that at the next meeting, and maybe having a draft of the, of the calming measures.
Sounds good.
I would agree. I think long, I mean, if it takes longer, but we get it right, because it's the way to go. However, in that same vein, though, if there's anything on a quote-unquote emergency basis that if you think we can implement quicker, you know, by all means, you know, bring those action items forward as well.
Yeah, the, the critical challenges by December will be, pretty much, except for the Christmas tree farms, will be diminishing in terms of the traffic that gets... So, as we go through the night, it's up to you guys.
Yeah. And again, remember, I think there's the two issues that we're talking about. The speeding issue and the reducing traffic on the local roads issue.
Good point, traffic calming, speeding.
Traffic, traffic calming, what I look at that is to reduce speeds. And that, that one, that one's more of an ongoing issue. You're right, the, the traffic on the local roads is gonna be reducing here in another...
Four weeks.
Yeah, month, maybe, so, yeah.
That's your discretion.
Okay.
All right, but we do have it on, we do have it set for a future agenda item. Thank you for following through. City manager staff reports.
I don't believe we have anything further to add.
All right, thank you very much. Upcoming items, there are several. I won't go into them this evening. If there's no other business before us this evening, I'll go ahead and adjourn the city council to its next regularly scheduled meeting, December tenth, the five-thirty closed session. Thank you, and good night.